I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. It's Monday, September 14th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Ms. Wu?
Yes, yes, here.
Ms. Laut?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from the meeting of August 12th, 2020, and this was the rescheduled meeting from the 10th. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Ms. Second.
Jared, seconded by Sharice. Are there any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda? Lori Pearson?
Thank you. Because the agreements are not quite ready yet, if you could please remove items five and six. That's resolutions number 42R and 43.
We will do that. Next item on the agenda is public input and presentations. Before we begin, I just wanted to just talk to the public for a minute, make a brief statement. I wanted to let you know that the city is moving forward with a number of the policy reforms, the examination of public safety and policing that you've been asking for over the past few months. We've listened to a great deal of input from you and have learned and are taking that into account as we move forward. And I just want to remind everybody that in order to get the work done that you want us to do and you expect us to do and that we want to do, is it has to be done in a public meeting to comply with Open Meetings Act. And that means that city council members can't discuss these items among themselves with more than two of them in a room. I can't discuss with two council members or anybody, anything like that. So all the work that we do as a council gets done here at the council meetings and at our committee meetings. And we need the time to do that because we have a huge, huge task ahead of us. Our top priority always is to get the business of the city done. And that includes addressing and making and working toward the changes that people want to see in our community. And we're excited about that. Some of the big issues on our plate going forward are looking at alternative responses to calls for service, and that includes the one door. We are going to be looking at the many recommendations from the Hillard Hines report, as well as others in terms of our use of force policy. And that's another big area that people are very, very concerned about. We'll be bringing back the racial disparities and traffic stops and actually bringing recommendations that's going to make some changes once and for all. And I know there's a great deal of interest in police oversight and accountability and many other things in addition to all the other types of responsibilities that the council has. And just tonight alone, we'll be following up on the Hillard Hines report. And we're going to be having a discussion about the possibility of the city joining the government alliance on race inequity, or GARE. Not to be confused with dare, which some people heard last week. It's GARE. Dare is long gone, for good reason. But I want to address specifically the issue of public participation, public input. And here's what we're going to do for tonight. People who want to comment on any of the action items that are listed on the agenda, and we have a packed agenda, you'll be invited to speak right after I finish here. If you have general comments to make on anything else, you will be able to speak after the business of the agenda is finished. I'm going to ask for one or allow one hour total of input tonight. And this is in order to let us get the business that we have to get done for this city. In order to give as many people as possible a chance to speak, we'll go with three minutes per speaker. You can also anytime, of course, email comments to thecitycouncil@urbanaillinois.us. And I'll be making some recommendations for actually changing city code in the future. The other thing I want to address is the tenor, the tone and the nature of the comments. I want to ask, and I will insist, that comments be addressed to the issues and to the city council as a whole. If you're, you cannot direct comments toward individually elected officials, city staff, volunteer members of boards and commissions, or other citizens. It's just not appropriate. And if you engage in this behavior, particularly negative comments, I will, I will mute and we'll move on. And you can finish your comments via email. We've had an increasing number of, an intensifying number of comments that are personal, they're really abusive, and they're, they're very hurtful. And that contributes to an increasingly hostile environment in our meetings, to the point where people are telling me they, they are intimidated about joining a meeting, they're intimidated about making a comment because they're afraid that they will be attacked. And this is not, this is not the environment that we have encouraged at Urbana City Council, and it is not the environment that we, that we can have continue. We need to be able to have respectful and open and discussions directed at the issues. And, and in this time, when we are all just buried under the layers of dealing with the pandemic and, and the, you know, working toward racial and social justice and everything else that people are dealing with today, the, the fact that we're piling on, some people are piling on folks in a city council meeting just makes it all that harder. And I want to especially give a recognition to Urbana city staff who have, have just performed amazingly well during this pandemic. Some of them are working two jobs because we're holding some positions vacant. Everything we do here at the city is harder because of the pandemic. Everything takes longer. We've got people working remotely. We have bureaucratic hoops to jump through. We are constantly being barraged with changes at the last minute that we have to respond to. And, and people are working incredibly hard, as I know people in the community are as well. We're all exhausted. This is an exhausting experience. And I'm asking your cooperation in not making it worse. So keep your comments directed toward the issues. Keep them to three minutes tonight. We'll have a total of one hour, and we will get to the business of, of this meeting. Okay. We will move to public input. And this is for agenda items that are action items, or items on our agenda that are action items. So that would be through item 11 on the agenda. And first up will be Superintendent Jennifer Ivory Tatum.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As the mayor said, my name is Jennifer Ivory Tatum, Superintendent of Urbana School District, longtime Urbana resident and Urbana High School parent. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to share this evening on resolution number 11. I know you have been following the board level conversations around budget costs for the SROs, but I would also like to provide perspective from an administrative viewpoint. My administrative team here at Central Office and the administrative teams at both the middle and high schools look forward to the opportunity to continue the teamwork started these last few months with our SROs to model effective, positive relationships with the police. Over the next two years of our agreement, we are committed as administrators to staying the course and providing training and professional development in a multi-tiered system of support, sharing our equity work, restorative practices, SCL strategies, and trauma sensitivity to help grow the capacity of our SROs and more than just their role as law enforcement officers. We agreed to a performance review after this next year to ensure we're still moving in the right direction with our model. This will be a little harder for us to accomplish with our students learning remotely, but we are committed to making this happen. We realize with Officer Burnett and Officer Robinson on our teams, we have an opportunity to build an exemplary model that not only represents and supports our students, but can be looked upon with very high regard in the community and nationwide. It is going to take a communal effort to assist with the task of providing the education, support, safety, and empowerment needed for our students. But given the opportunity, we know we can do this together. We recognize that education does not reside solely within our school buildings, which is why I'm here sharing this evening. The goal of education must extend beyond our school walls to the hearts and minds of individuals to affect change. As we work to educate and support those within our district and in our community on the importance of building positive relationships, we can start to ensure effective outcomes when we see all of our students as precious entities who must be valued and cared for, while at the same time maintaining a safe and structured learning environment. Our approach is not to be tactical or punitive, but instead relational. We are confident the student relationships fostered with Officer Burnett and Officer Robinson will ultimately extend beyond the classroom and out into the Urbana community. I want to ensure city council that our administrators believe that SROs are an integral part of the school support teams at both Urbana Middle and Urbana High School. And as a team, we want to continue the work that we've started on behalf of all USD 116 students. Thank you for the opportunity to share this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next up is Sarah Nixon.
Hello.
Hello.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sarah Nixon. I'm a resident of Urbana. And I first would like to comment on Agenda Item 11, Resolution Regarding the Future of the School Resource Program. Enter... I'm sorry, wrong, wrong resolution. What I would like to address in my comment is GARE. I think that's, is that resolution or discussion point number?
That's a discussion item, which is not an action item. Did you want to comment on an action item?
I see. I don't think so. Does that mean my comment goes to the end of?
Yes.
Comment? Okay.
Thank you. Next up, Tracy Chong. And these, again, a reminder, these are on the action items listed on the agenda.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me start with a question. Hang on. To Mayor Marlin and city council members. Does the city of Urbana believe in the Ten Shared Principles? The city adopted the NAACP Ten Shared Principles in response to public outcry after the beating of Aleah Lewis by Urbana Police Department officers. Principle number two says that all persons should be treated with dignity and respect. From the findings and presentation by Hillard Hines last week, it didn't seem like much thought was given to the dignity and respect of Aleah Lewis.
Ms. Chong, Ms. Chong, your, your comments need to be directed toward action items on the agenda.
It is, just wait for it. Instead, the focus was once again whether the officers acted according to policy and on the well-being of the officers involved. Principle number 10 addresses the importance of de-escalation. Till today, we have Mike Schlosser, the person who trains our police officers, denying that there's a problem, that there's a problem with officers not practicing de-escalation techniques. The city has invited Mr. Schlosser back to train the CPR members, even though this issue was pointed out. If we can't even admit the problem, how can it be fixed? Are the SRO officers who are going to be in schools also trained by Mr. Schlosser? Are these officers also trained in the escalation techniques? Are they actually going to practice these de-escalation techniques? Several principles address racial discrimination and racial tension, but none of these issues were even brought up in the Hillard Hines review. Why has the city not addressed the issue of the disproportionate number of African-American children arrested by UPD? How does this play into account with all the SROs in school? Is this address going to be, is this issue going to be addressed? Principle number four stressed on the four pillars of procedural justice, fairness, voice, transparency, and impartiality. The city of Urbana is working in the opposite of transparency since the adoption of these principles, charging excessive Foya fees, creating hurdles for civilians to obtain public documents, even using means that the Illinois Public Access Councilor have found illegal. This is the opposite of transparency. The Hillard Hines review is also the opposite of transparency. Mayor Marlin contracted with a firm without going through a democratic voting process. Most of the related documents from the Hillard Hines review are still kept from the public. And correct me if I'm wrong, city council members, who are the special people who have access to these documents?
I think we're off topic, Mayor.
Anything else on the SROs? That seems to be your, your link to this.
My point is, is if there's no transparency, which if you, you didn't let me even get through it, the same issue applies to the SROs. So far, the discussion has just been public complaining, complaining, bringing up issues about the SROs, but I don't see any transparency in the process. And you are not allowing me to complete, talking about transparency. So am I going to get to talk, complete it later in the day?
No, you have 30 seconds left.
I'm going to say that even elected representatives have expressed frustration that you and you, Mayor Marlin, and city staff have finalized issues before even getting to the voting process.
Please keep your comments directed toward the issues.
Well, I guess you're censoring the public now.
Okay, next person is Amina Payne. Again, address the action items on the agenda at this point in the meeting. Thank you.
Hi, I'm addressing resolution number 11. Am I being heard clearly?
Yes.
Okay. Trauma-informed practices are practices that involve recognizing, understanding, and properly responding to the effects of trauma. The term complex trauma describes exposure to multiple traumatic events, often of interpersonal nature, and are wide-ranging, long-term impacts of this exposure. Simple trauma refers to one traumatic event, like an assault. As an educator, trauma-informed education practices and approaches are something that I build into my repertoire when I'm working with my cohort, cohort, which is adult learners, who are from varied cultural backgrounds. So it's heartbreaking to hear a plethora of microaggressions stemming from Urbana's leadership. And many of us in the community feel that Urbana shouldn't conduct themselves in this way, and it shouldn't be normalized or accepted. Again, this is coming from Urbana's leadership. Right, so SROs are not effective in improving school safety, discipline, or climate. It don't improve school safety or reduce school violence. And there is no clear evidence that, that the use of school resource officers in schools is effective in preventing school violence. A review of 40 years of evaluations of school policing showed no positive impact, no positive impact on school safety outcomes. Right, SROs have been part of Urbana for nearly 30 years. Does lead to more expulsions and suspensions. Well, maybe not expulsions because Urbana, you know, sends kids to ready. They don't have to count expulsions. But this impacts Black students at high rates. And studies show that schools with SROs rely more heavily on exclusionary discipline. This is true at Urbana. The data shows that in the 2019, 2020 school year, 70% of total suspensions were out-of-school suspensions. And over half of those suspended, both in school and out of school, were Black kids whose punitive discipline measures disproportionately targeting Black youth, often for subjective reasons, like perceived disobedience or defiance. We recently had a presentation by Chief Seraphin, and it also showed that arrests stemming from the community are nearly 85% Black youth. Police encounters trigger fear, stress, trauma, and anxiety for Black and Brown youth, and this harms mental health, and it erodes educational performance. So what works? Relationship building, mental health services, supportive approaches, social and emotional development. And it should be glaringly obvious why this is a community-wide issue, not isolated to the schools. Stop being afraid of white flight or the perception of economic development. Any transformative leader should understand that investing in their people is vital for happy and thriving communities. Take care. Thanks for the time.
Diane, can I just ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Are people going to be able to speak at both? Because if they're not, we should probably let them know if they can speak at both.
No, you get to speak once during a meeting. That has always been the case at Urbana City Council meetings. Benjamin Stone?
Oh, okay. Is this me? All right. My name is Benjamin Stone. I live in Urbana, Illinois. I use they/them pronouns. Thank you, council members, for letting me speak on this agenda item. But question, Mayor Marlin, I really hope you checked with the city lawyer before deciding you're going to cut off public input and decide the terms by which I am allowed to exercise my constitutional right to free speech. Because if you cut me off, I assure you, you can, basically can expect a complaint from me, and it will be properly processed. This is offensive that you're trying to cut us off. Now, I'm going to go to my original letter I had. And if you cut me off, that's your decision, Mayor Marlin. Because I, I am a member of the Community Resilience Cooperative, and we recently received a response from Dennis Roberts in regards to a contact we had.
Mr. Stone, are you speaking through an agenda item?
Do not assume my gender. It says right there in my name, they/them. Thank you. Now, this is not an about an agenda item, and you are not allowed to dictate that, Mayor Marlin. Are you?
Yes, I am.
Stop interrupting me. You cannot just, you cannot just cut us off.
You've been asked to address an, an act, a specific agenda item at this part of the meeting. Next up is Brian Dunn.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunn. I live in Champaign. Yeah, so about Agenda Item 11, I think that, you know, at this point in time, if we can't make the pragmatic decision to cut ties with SROs at a time when the school population is this low, I think that it just shows that we are completely indoctrinated by this, you know, false belief that police are, you know, an essential part of education, which I think is very dangerous. I think that we need to be very careful about how we allocate resources to children. And I think we need to think about what our priorities are and what our investments are. So if we continue to invest in SROs, you know, and we understand adverse childhood experiences, and we understand, you know, the discriminatory nature of Urbana Police, and we understand, you know, that students of color, they already face so much, so many hurdles, and that this is just another one for them. It's just completely antithetical to the entire concept of Black Lives Matter. And it's just lousy policy, lousy city management, lousy decision-making. And I think it's disgusting the way that you're censoring people at this time. I think that you should be invigorated and by how much participation, participation you're receiving, whether or not you agree with it, whether or not you agree with the tone. I think the fact that people are coming and they are showing up and they're speaking out about local government is a beautiful thing. And it's trash that you're trying, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Diane, are there more than 20 persons wishing to speak tonight?
We don't know yet. Mr. Hansen, you can begin. You have three minutes.
Okay, well, the city code, the law says five minutes. And my second question is, is, did you guys vote to add an agenda item to the end of the meeting, another public input period? Did I miss that?
It's going, we've, we've always had the option of distributing public input. The presiding officer has that option. So we'll, if you want to speak to an agenda item, please do so.
Okay, I'm definitely going to speak to an agenda item. So I'll, I'll speak now.
Okay.
Okay, so can you reset the timer, please?
No, you've got two minutes and 28 seconds left.
I've got five minutes, actually. Okay, so my name is Christopher Hansen. I've lived in Urbana for 18 years. If you'll recall, when I addressed the council regarding the Ward Two appointment, I described to the council that there exists a nasty feedback mechanism between the public and the city. And it exists because we're not having honest conversations. City staff and elected officials frequently choose to lie about contentious issues.
Mr. Hansen, please address the issue.
Yeah, I'm getting.
Personal attacks on people.
I haven't mentioned anyone's name. Frequently choose to lie about contentious issues or just ignore the issues instead of acknowledging and correcting misconduct. We've seen this repeatedly in regards to the Freedom of Information Act and repeatedly in regards to the Aleah Lewis arrest. So when you have dishonest conversations, rather than acknowledging and correcting, correcting the misconduct, the result is that you aggravate the public, who are much, actually much smarter than you give them credit for. So the public comes back, meet it, every meeting, more upset than the last. And we do this over and over. So now, the mayor is, is making content-based speech restrictions at public meetings, and she thinks this is going to make things better, but it's actually going to backfire. And the city's relationship with the public is going to become much worse. So it is really the mayor and the staff that are making things worse because they refuse to recognize misconduct and they refuse to take responsibility for their actions. And just so we're clear what we're talking about here, for the past few months, we've had city staff flagrantly violating public records laws. They're making criminals of themselves.
Mr. Hansen, what is your agenda item?
I'm getting there. SROs. They're making criminals of themselves in an effort to be vindictive, and the mayor cheers them on and scolds the public for pointing out the misconduct. And regarding the SRO situation, I want to remind everyone that when the city council voted on this, the mayor told us how unlikely it is that the police officer would ever remove their gun from their holster. And we've seen recently that they take their guns out pretty readily. So, and they don't know how to handle their guns safely. So something went wrong with that conversation, and we ended up with, you know, your police officers with guns in our schools. And I know you're going to talk about GARE and attention, like, this is going to be the same as the Ten Shared Principles, where you're going to pass this flowery language, and it's not going to have any meaning, and no one's going to follow it. Because, I mean, even the Ten Shared Principles mentions transparency twice, but then Urbana just started violating all the public records laws. So I, I don't see any meaning in any of this. I think, I think you probably shouldn't vote for this GARE thing because I think it probably actually destroys the conversation going forward. Because you get the feeling that.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. Your time is up. Grace Wilken?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, and please address the agenda item or items if you wish to speak.
Yes, my name is Grace Wilken. I'm an Urbana resident. I've lived in Champaign, Urbana for about 20 years, off and on. And I am talking about item number 11, Resolution About SROs in Urbana Schools. And I would like for us to be able to look at the data and the research and the great public input that people put in that the SROs have not shown to be effective and that it leads to increased childhood arrest, particularly of our Black students in Urbana schools. We already have that data. I understand that the Urbana school is afraid because of past fights, and they need to examine the issue and not demonize and criminalize their own students. Decisions made out of a fear reaction are not what we need to lead our community. And how can an SRO get paid $130,000 a year when teachers and social workers make so much less? And the officers are not needed while the schools are online? Why not at least reduce their salary during the pandemic? I encourage you to pass the resolution that allows the school district and community to make their own decision about the SROs and not be locked into this contract with fear of repercussions from the city. On all the other action items as well, I encourage you to please think about what you've heard from the public and make decisions that are in the best interest of the most vulnerable in our community. And if you're not concerned about having enough times in meetings, why not hold special meetings, as Jared has suggested, as someone has suggested, and allow for extra time for public input? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Watkins?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Julie Watkins. I am an Urbana resident. I agree with other previous. I agree with other previous comment about the SROs. When the schools are already having budget problems paying money to portray, to patrol empty schools is saying a pointless police job is more important than resources for student learning. Many people have shown how SROs harm learning instead of help, and I urge you all to vote no on SROs. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to address the council on a specific agenda item who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, we will move on to the unfinished business. There is none.
Diane, can I ask a question quickly?
Yes.
We've received a number of emails that are related to the agenda items. I don't know if we want to read off names and generally what they're talking about.
I was going to do that toward the end. I haven't seen all of them. But we'll do that at the end of the meeting. And again, the emails will be incorporated into the meeting record.
I just think that there's a number on SROs.
Do you have the list of them with you?
I don't have the list. I have the email open.
Okay. Would you read their names?
Sure, I can try and go through this.
I have a quick question before, before. Are we, are we not incorporating emails that are received after 4:00 p.m. into the public record as we were stating our rules?
Well, we, we had that, although in past meetings, emails received after four o'clock have been. So we can do that, I think.
Okay, so I should only read the names of people who sent emails at seven or earlier, is that correct?
Seven or earlier, yeah.
Okay, so we have some, someone named Cord Scherter. See here. One email. Julie and David Gruff. Arminy Johnson. Ezra Kolskun. Bruce Rumany. Tamara Bejima. Shad Barker. John Minor. Cheryl Van Ness. Ashley Orton. Marcus Johnson. Julie Erlinger. Pilar Fisher. Linda Minor. David Bales. Teresa Sweeney. Mary Bunyard. Sherry Langorf. And I think those are all the ones who are in favor of deleting Section A, the 11th Agenda Item. We also have. Sorry, I'm just going through these here. We have Sarah Nixon, who wanted to talk about freedom of speech threatened at City Hall. City, sorry, that's not on this one here. And Amina Payne already spoke. Please correct me if I missed anybody here that emailed before 7:00 p.m.
Christina Janik.
Christina Janik is in favor of passing the resolution.
Megan Miracle also. Anne Marie Esposito.
Thank you.
And John Hayes.
Yes, and John Hayes, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports of standing committees.
Yes, ma'am. The committee, the whole, met last Tuesday, September 8. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval of Ordinance Number 2020-09-044, an ordinance ratifying extension of Emergency Order 2003, temporary suspending, temporarily suspending the issuance of special event permits.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Julie Laut. Any discussion? Dennis?
Oh, I'm wondering if we got an email from Kurt Boorman with a correction on one of the lines in these ordinances.
Yes. We do, on both of the emergency order ordinances, there's just some standard language that was left off. So after the text that states passed by the city council, we will add the language to this ordinance before I sign it. And it's, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. This ordinance is hereby passed by the affirmative vote, the ayes and nays being called of a majority of the members of the Council of the City of Urbana, Illinois, at a meeting of said council. So that language will be added to both.
So it's as amended?
As amended, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is Ordinance Number 2020-09-045, an ordinance ratifying Emergency Order 2010, which is temporary ban of on-premises consumption of food and beverage within a specific bounded area.
So ma'am, on behalf of the committee, I move for approval?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I read your, I read your ordinance there.
I did my work for me, thank you.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by, who was that?
Mary Alice.
Okay. Any discussion?
And again, as amended.
Yes, as amended. Mary Alice?
I was just wondering if we had heard back from the restaurants and bars, does this impact, if we have any feedback from them?
On, yes. And it's, it's, at least one is, is reporting negative feedback, and they're not sure they will be reopening again, and I don't. And another was fearful of the same thing. This should, is set to expire five o'clock on Wednesday. We haven't yet heard from the university what the numbers look like this week. And, you know, we'll have to make a decision in the next day, basically, if this is going to be extended. But it's having a really, it's, it's, it's extremely hard impact on our businesses, not only on Urbana's side of things, but Champaign Restaurants in the campus town area have been closed indoor dining for three weeks. So it's a tremendous, tremendously negative impact. So we're hoping that the numbers trend in the right direction and that these, that personally, I hope this order ends on Wednesday. So we'll keep you posted.
Well, so far, the numbers have been trending downwards. I'm not sure what is, it's below 0.5 the positivity rate the past couple days, so that's encouraging.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the, really, the cooperation of the students in doing this. So. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Colbrook. Are there reports from special committees? Seeing none, reports of officers. I did want to mention that Assistant City Attorney Kurt Boorman is present tonight representing the legal department. All right, new business. We have a number of resolutions related to accepting funds from various sources, and many of these are related to COVID relief. So we'll get started. I believe Lori Pearson and Sheila Dodd, or Alyssa JJ.
I think Sheila's probably starting it off.
Okay, thank you.
So the first item is a resolution accepting the local coronavirus urgent remediation emergency support, and that is here's funding that's coming through the state of Illinois. Urbana has been allocated $1.7 million through a formula looking at number of cases, potential impact. This funding is supposed to be used for the city itself to offset any impact of COVID. So the expense has to be connected to the COVID emergency. It has to be necessary. It cannot fill a shortfall in government revenues. And it's for expenses not funded through another budgeted line item as of March 27, 2020, which is when the emergency order was put into place. We have to sign the agreement by, and return it by October 1st, and then we can start getting reimbursed for some of our line items. Some of the things that we are looking at getting reimbursed for are computers so staff can work remotely, or software to allow us to have secure access, those type of things.
Are there technical questions for Sheila? Can we get, oh, Mary Alice?
Do we have any estimate in terms of how many, how much we've spent on these?
We're, I'm estimating Mary Alice about $500,000.
Okay.
It's going to be really difficult for us to spend the 1.7 million. We have until November 1st to do a draw of the expenses we've incurred so far. And then we have until December 30th to continue to spend any money. And then November 1st date, the state of Illinois will look at our expenses and our draws and determine if we're not going to be able to use it, they will pull the funds and reallocate it to another community. So there's just a very tight, short turnaround time on this particular grant.
But just to be clear, this is for city expenses?
Yes, yes. Yep.
Any other questions? Could we get a motion?
I'll move Resolution Number 2020-09-038R, Resolution Accepting the Local COVID Urgent Remediation Emergency Care Call Sure Program of Illinois.
Is there a second?
I'll make the second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dennis for their discussion. Will the clerk, oh, Bill?
So would it cover expenses that, like, to help provide outdoor space for restaurants or things like that?
No, it will not. It's really just for what the city has expended. Our small business grants have helped with some of those other expenses that came from a different funding source. But this really is only for city expenses. So like, we'll be doing posters that talk about, you know, reopening or that type of thing. That can be because the city's actually paying for it, but the other things, we cannot, unfortunately.
It's like in the past when we did the curbanas to provide basically public space for restaurants to use. I know we weren't able to do that this year because our, apparently, the equipment for the platforms had kind of worn out.
Right.
If, if we did something like that, could we get reimbursed for it?
Alls I can say is we can try. It's very tight and limited funding, and they're very specific on what is allowed. So some of the allowable expenses are public health expenses, such as expenses for communication and enforcement by local governments of public health orders, expenses for actions taken to facilitate compliance. So maybe, like, the toilets that are automatically flushed and we're not touching them, or hand wash stations, or those type of things that we've made changes in the city building to keep the employees safe, those could be. But the, the kind of the test you have to ask yourself, is it a reasonable, necessary expense of a local government to respond to the public health emergency? So it's really more focused on the city, not necessarily the, the community, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
So in the past, when this all began, the city did a considerable amount of purchases of laptops, used laptops and others to supply to staff so they could work safely from home. Was that, was, are those purchases covered? They were done earlier, and is there a timeline from which the expenses can be recompensed?
Yeah, anything purchased after March 27th to respond to the pandemic, and that's a great example, Dennis, that definitely would be something because staff was, you know, for, for the safety of staff, we were working, we are working remotely, and so that would be an eligible expense.
And that was an expensive expense, I have a feeling. So, good.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And I would just like to highlight the, the work of Sheila and Alyssa in administering these grants and navigating this, these grants. It's just an enormous amount of work, and they've, they've done a really wonderful job of making this, these funds available to the public as well as to the city. Next up is Resolution 2020-09-039R, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the Execution of the Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement with the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission, TBRA.
The Urbana Home Consortium is composed of Champaign, Urbana, and the county. We receive an allocation of funding that we can look at the community and determine the best use. We have some funds from prior-year programs that weren't spent. And in light of COVID and the need for rental assistance, we reallocated or were recommending reallocating those funds to a tenant-based rental assistance program administered by Champaign County Regional Plan Commission. They have the staffing that they're able to manage the program, and they've done this for many, many years. So rental assistance can be provided up to two years for eligible tenants, and it will help, you know, those that are in desperate need right now.
Any technical questions for Sheila? Mary Alice?
So Sheila, can you speak? Well, we've heard a lot that the eviction moratorium is happening, but there's, of course, a lot of people whose bills are kind of piling up. How does that interface with this particular grant?
One of the ways that we are partnering it is the first round of COVID funding that the city received that we put out for rent assistance. That assistance I could only do for three months. Well, as we see, the pandemic's going on much longer than that. So we can refer those same clients to this so they can continue getting assistance through another pot of money. So it'll just help expand the amount of assistance that's available.
So, so what I'm hearing you say is even if people don't have an eviction notice, but they're unable to pay their rent due to COVID, they are eligible through this program?
Yes, yep. And we, we've really marketed it towards the landlords in the community. And so the one that is being used with the CDBG funds, we have had over 30 applications, and the landlords are really helping the tenants kind of navigate the process and are working really closely with staff. And then we're letting them know about this additional pot and have set up procedures where we can refer people once that three months of assistance is ended with us to go to this other program.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you've been doing with, with trying to address this unmet need. We really appreciate it, Sheila.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions on this program or this resolution? Is there a motion?
I will, I guess I'll move again. I will move approval of Resolution Number 2020-09-039R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement with Champaign County Regional Plan Commission for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Julie. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution number 2020-09-04R, resolution accepting a census implementation grant from Champaign-Urbana Public Health District.
This grant is an extension of the grant that was awarded to the city in February. That particular grant was for about $59,000 and ended June 30th. With the new fiscal year starting, Public Health awarded an additional $20,000 to the city to reimburse us for expenses and trying to get the word out about the census. We've done some major mailings. We've had staff attending events and trying to get the word out. And so this will just help us get reimbursed for that staff time.
Any questions for Sheila? Could we get a motion?
I'll do that. I move resolution 2020-09-040R, a resolution accepting a census implementation grant from the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District for approval.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, is that Sharice? Seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Will the, Bill?
I just, I, I don't know how much more you can do. I'm sure, I mean, $20,000 won't cover a lot, but I, I saw a sign by the COVID testing tents on campus to remind students to do the census with a QR code right there on the signs, they could probably even do it while they were standing in line if there was a line. But I think the tricky part is, especially in the areas that are, that we've received low counts on in North Lincoln, the turnover is high. And when they answer the census now, they have to answer as to where they were living on April 1st, I assume that's the census date. So, you know, you might go to, you know, 10 or 10 apartments up there and half the students are new this year, lived someplace else last year. So it's just hard to, to reach people. A lot of people have graduated, you aren't there anymore. So I don't know. I just thought I'd throw that out there. If you can think of any way to reach graduates that don't live here anymore, or people that lived here in April, or would have lived here in April if they hadn't stopped school, you know, and reach them and remind them to do the census. Cause even if they're living in California or wherever now, if they log on to do the census, it's got to ask them where they were April 1st. So if there's any way to reach, you know, people that may have graduated, that might be one more, one more thing to try.
Sure. And city staff has worked really closely with Champaign County RPC, the public health, University of Illinois, and the city of Champaign, and trying to reach all of these hard to reach populations. So it's been happening in a variety of ways, but this small grant really just focuses on city staff and city time. But we're trying to be as creative as possible to reach as many because as you can see from these other grants, those numbers really count and will make a difference in our community.
And we have, Sharice?
I just wanted to ask, is this like, you know, hopefully to cover or to reimburse for the times that people have been at Market at the Square and at various other open, open air public functions? And, and they've actually had to put their, you know, their own time in?
Yes, it will reimburse staff time for that. Or when we canvassed, you know, census, some of the census tracts and put door hangers on, on doors, trying to just capture those low response rates census tracks. So it, it will help recover some of that.
And my other question is, we've gotten, it seems on a, on a federal level, we've gotten a lot of different message, messaging regarding when the census is, the count is actually going to end. Because I, I thought I saw somewhere or read somewhere that a federal judge compelled at least the state of California to continue to count up to the 31st of, of October. So my question is, do we have that same type of, of directive here in Illinois? Have you heard anything like that?
Yeah, the directive that I've heard, and it's, it's nationally because we can't have one state have one date and another state have a different date. But the most recent deadline that I have heard is September 30th is when we're due. So we're really, you know, trying to put the push on to get out there and get the information.
Can I remind, could I remind folks to mute your microphone? We're getting some background noise here. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Definitely.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And I would like to give a shout out to our deputy city clerk, Wendy Hundley, to our communications coordinator, Bridgette Broihan, to the community development staff, and also the city council members who've helped get the message out about the census. This has just been a perfect storm of challenges with the pandemic. It could not have come at a worse time. So, so college communities are particularly hard hit with, because of all the factors that you noted. And we'll have to figure out how to compensate for that as we go forward. But the deadline is September 30th, so we're coming up on that fast. Resolution number 2020-09-041R, which is resolution of the city of Urbana, Champaign County, authorizing the execution of a cooperation agreement between the city and the town of Normal in McLean County, Illinois, and authorizing Normal to exercise the powers of the city of Urbana in connection with an MCC program and loan finance program. It's community development.
The MCC program is being funded through bond cap, which council approved this program in May. Bond cap is allocated by the state of Illinois, so it doesn't come from general funds or grants, but based on your population, you're giving a set dollar amount per person and you can use that to fund needs in the community. We have funded the Illinois Housing Development Authority or given them authorization to utilize our bond cap for affordable housing projects. And we've also ceded our bond cap to this mortgage credit certificate program. And we've done both of those programs for several years with, with some, with a great deal of success, I believe. This year, the group that has normally handled the MCC program has reached out to the town of Normal and they're going to do it regionally for the state of Illinois. And the town of Normal has asked that we sign this intergovernmental agreement to allow them to administer this program.
And just a quick, there was a typo on the cover page of the agreement. It is between the town of Normal and the city of Urbana, not the city of Urban. So thanks to Legal for finding that error.
Any questions for Sheila? Mary Alice?
Sheila, do we have any sense how many people were helped by this program last year? I know we've asked this during the time where we've approved those bonds.
Right, right. And I did follow up with them after Jared questioned it this past year. And David Roush, who is the, the manager of the program, said that he thought there was between 12 and 15 people that received the, the certificate.
Out of Urbana specifically?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion to get this on the floor?
I'll do it again. I move resolution number 2020-09-041R. It's a resolution of the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the city of the town of Normal, McLean County, Illinois, Normal, and authorizing Normal to exercise, exercise the powers of the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, in connection with the MCC program and a loan finance program for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill Brown? Okay. Further discussion? Sharice?
I, I just wanted some clarification as to why, why Normal? That's basically the only question I really have. Why are we giving them our, our, our powers? What is, why them?
The assist program has been managed by Sterling Company for several years and they have reached out to the town of Normal to administer it this year. And I don't, I don't know the history of it, Sharice. I can reach out to David Roush and see if I can get more information on why the town of Normal is administering it rather than the Sterling Group.
Or why not the city of Urbana? I guess, why are we giving them our powers? Why are we not administering it ourselves?
It is a staff intensive program and there are two of us right now in the grants management. So I would have to outsource it if we had to do it internally because I just don't have the capacity. It is something that's not really governed or, or there's no administrative cost that a town of Normal is going to get that takes away from anything that Urbana might have gotten. It really just allows them to administer the program for the entire area. And I believe with the resolution, there was a brochure that listed all of the communities that's going to be utilizing the program. And so it makes it a little easier when one person is administering a program for many communities.
Okay, I don't see a brochure, but okay.
Okay, if you didn't get it, I can email it to you.
No, that's okay. No, that's why I'm asking the question.
Sure, sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Further discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, and it's not really the first time that the city of Urbana has partnered with other, other partners in, in doing grant management. We can't do everything that ourselves, so we share that burden with other people. And, you know, we're, we're doing this partnership with a lot of communities. And so if one of them will just take on the responsibility of doing the administration, we're all happy for that. It relieves our staff from the burden of doing all the management work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Per the direction earlier, we will remove items five and six from the agenda. So we're at number seven, which is approval of Consolidated Social Service Fund for the fiscal year 2021 allocations. Alyssa?
So on August 24th, I presented our funding recommendations for 17 programs. Danielle had spoke earlier tonight about the programs that township is going to fund. So I'm bringing the city funding programs to you. A note to the spreadsheet that was attached is that we will not be funding Channing Murray and that will be taken over by the township. So that leaves us with eight programs by the city. Chris will be receiving $15,000, Crisis Nursery $10,000, Don Moyer $8,000, Eastern Illinois Food Bank $7,500, Family Service Home Care $6,000, Family Service Meals on Wheels $5,500. And that will also be funded by the Community Development Block Program program. And I will speak on that as the next agenda item. And then the Regional Planning Commission Youth Assessment Center will receive $10,000 and Races $5,000.
Any questions for Alyssa? Okay, can we get a motion, please?
I move to approve the Consolidated Social Service Fund for fiscal year 2021 allocations.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Further discussion? Sharice? And then Bill?
There were just a couple of services, and it's probably kind of late to say anything. A couple of services that I was wondering why they weren't considered. And one is First Followers. And I, I know that they work out of, out of a church. And I was also wondering about the, now I imagine it's probably because it's under Urbana Park District steam after school at Canaan Academy.
Sharice, it's a Sheila, I can speak to the First Followers. We are working really closely with them for access to the home funding versus this pot of money because it will allow them to get capacity building dollars and really help them grow their program. So it, it wasn't that they didn't have a good program, it was that there's a better pot of money. When you have such a small amount to spread out to a lot of agencies, we tried to look at the best pot for the agency.
Okay, thank you. Cause I know that they, they work with, with, with people coming out of prison and trying to, to help them re-acclimate into the community and so on and so forth. So.
They have a wonderful program.
Yeah, a wonderful program. And for Canaan, is that because it's coming out of the school district or because it works with the school district? I mean, that school district or park district?
That one is because of the park district, yes.
Okay. So they're being funded from the park, through the park district? Alyssa?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk, oh, Bill, sorry.
I just, I just wondered if we needed to specify in our motion that the $8,000 to Channing Murray, we're leaving that out, right? Because that's been done by the township?
Correct. Yes, I would, yeah.
So accept the recommendations without the $8,000 for Channing Murray? Okay.
Would you like to restate that in your motion, Julie?
Sure. So I move that we approve the Consolidated Social Service Fund for the fiscal year 2021 allocations minus the $8,000 to the Channing Murray Foundation.
Does that work, Alyssa?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, Bill Colebrook, is that all right? As a second, okay?
I will second it.
Great, all right. Can the clerk, clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut? Ms. Laut?
Yes, yes. It's on a different page.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution number 2020-09-044R, resolution approving City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Agreement, which is the family service project. Is this Alyssa?
So every year, the city receives an allocation of community development block grant funds. And part of that requirement to administer those funds is that we have to put out an annual report. So in our annual action plan, we've already set aside $5,000 for Consolidated Social Service Fund. And in previous meetings, we've discussed the budget for the program with council. So basically, our recommendation is to fund Family Service Meals on Wheels program with this $5,000. Their total grants agreement would be $5,500. So the remaining $500 would come from city general funds. And attached And attached would be the resolution and the grant agreement.
Any technical questions for Alyssa on this one? Mary Alice?
So Alyssa and Sheila, I know we've talked about Meals on Wheels quite a bit in the Social Services Committee. Is this going to have, is it just money that is going to be given to Meals on Wheels? Or is this going to include a decrease in the payment that an Urbana resident would need to pay?
This would be a decrease in payments, so that it is a benefit to Urbana residents.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sharice?
Yeah, okay, so looking at this resolution and the one that we just passed, because it says that Family Service Meals on Wheels, $5,500 recommended, but that's going to be CBDG money. It's not going to be the, the other, the Consolidated Social, Social Service Fund, correct?
500 of it will be from city funds, but both are, both items are from like the budget for the program in general. So our CSS app has three pots of money. So township, community development block grants, and city general funds.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Let me just make a comment.
Can we get a motion on the floor first, Dennis?
Sure.
Would you like to move?
Yeah, I'll do that then.
Okay.
I move Resolution 2020-09-004, A Resolution Approving City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Family Service Project 2021 CSP for approval.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill Colbrook. And now your comment, Dennis.
Yeah, I just want to say that it wasn't in this state, but I enrolled my mom in the Meals on Wheels program. And it served her warm meals once a day for about three years before she passed away. And it was a vital event in her life to keep her going, to keep her well-fed while we were not present at the house. And it was a wonderful experience for her because she would wait for that person to come at 10:45 every morning, every day. It was a way that that individual checked on her health and that fact that she was in good shape. So it had multiple, multiple benefits besides serving the elderly community. I'm a great fan.
And during COVID, it may be, especially if people are isolated at home, it may be the only contact they have with someone else sometimes.
It's very important for people that are elderly to have a decent meal. And this assures that this can happen. It's a great program.
Okay, any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is Ordinance 2020-09-046, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Two. This allows us to actually implement the acceptance of all these different grants. Elizabeth Cannon will speak to this. You're muted, Elizabeth.
I think Sheila could cover this. If we can't get Elizabeth. Sheila, you comfortable with that?
No, I apologize. I had thought Sheila was covering this, so.
Yeah, I certainly can.
Okay.
This just follows, this follows up on all of the previous applications. So the, in order to accept the money, we have to amend the budget. So this will allow us to accept and enter into the budget the census grant. We do need to make a change since we are pulling off the Emergency Solutions Grant. We need to take that section out of this budget ordinance and bring it forward whenever we bring the new agreements forward. But this will allow us to accept the census grant and the others that we mentioned previously.
Just to clarify, Sheila, we need to pull out under Community Development Grant Fund, under Revenues, Item 33150533, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant?
The 41340, yes, Emergency Solutions Grant, yes.
And then.
Go ahead.
And under Expenditures, it's 3315, let's see, 52,859,330?
Yes, for the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Is there anything else we need to pull out of there?
No.
Okay. Questions on this one? We get a motion, please?
All right, I'll do it again. I move Ordinance Number 2020-09-046, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance. This is Budget Amendment Number Two Omnibus, with the omission of the funding for revenues and income referring to the Emergency Solutions Grant, which has been removed from this docket today for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is Ordinance 2020-09-047, An Ordinance Approving a Major Variance at 102 West Pennsylvania Avenue. This is Zoning Board of Appeals Case Number 2020-MAJ-03.
We're going to need Jason to let Kathryn Trotter in as a panelist, please, so that she can give the presentation. Excellent, here she is.
All right. So I have a case, 2020, Major Variance 03 for 102 West Pennsylvania Avenue. Mark and Fran Ansel requested major variance to allow a garage to encroach 14 and a half feet into the required 15-foot front yard at 102 West Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicants have tuned in remotely to answer any questions you may have. And prior to the ZBA meeting, we received two communications, both in favor of the major variance. The applicant seek a major variance to allow a garage to encroach into the required front yard setback. 102 West Pennsylvania Avenue is a corner lot at the corner of Broadway Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. There is a required yard or front yard on each street frontage, and the location map on the screen shows the parcel. The parcel is roughly 0.28 acres. The lot is 63 feet wide and 193 feet deep. And applicants received a major variance in 2008 to allow them to build a 24-foot by 24-foot garage that would encroach 14.5 feet into the required 15-foot front yard along Broadway Avenue. But they were unable to build the garage that was approved in 2008 due to personal reasons. They now seek a variance to allow a slightly larger garage, 24 feet by 30 feet, to encroach into the, into the required front yard with the same six-inch setback from the east property line. A new variance is required because the request is substantially different, and the existing concrete slab will not be reused. That was a condition of the 2008 major variance. Here's a zoning map of the property. The site is zoned R2, single-family residential. The parcels surrounding the property are also zoned R2. Nearby are the Urbana Middle School, Urbana High School to the north, and Blair Park to the southeast. And garages are allowed by right in the R2 zoning district, but they cannot be located in their required front yard. This shows the position of the garage as it exists now and the right-of-way off of Broadway Avenue. The existing garage already encroaches nine and a half feet into the required front yard. A major variance is necessary because there's a bald cypress tree on the property that is three feet from the existing property line. The tree is over 50 years old with a diameter of eight feet and a circumference of 24 feet. Variants would allow the new garage to be built as far as possible from the bald cypress tree. And the bald cypress tree and the existing garage have been on the property since the applicants purchased the home. The existing garage is deteriorating and needs to be replaced. The city arborists and the applicant's personal arborists have acknowledged the significance of the tree and the importance of its preservation. The applicants could build a garage without a variance, but to keep it out of the front yard would require the bald cypress tree to be removed. The applicants have invested time and money into caring for the tree and would like to preserve and protect it however possible. Variants would allow them to build the new garage as far away from the tree as possible to minimize any damage to the root system. So this slide shows the larger-than-average right-of-way along Broadway Avenue. The right-of-way along Broadway Avenue is particularly wide for a right-of-way in the city of Urbana, and it's measured at 82 and a half feet. The right-of-way extends 25 feet 9 inches west of the curb to the applicant's property line. While the variance would allow the garage to be built six inches from the property line, it would still leave setback from Broadway Avenue by 26 feet 3 inches. The garage could be, or cannot be built further south due to the location of the house. It could not be built further west or north without causing damage to the tree. To best protect, protect the tree and to allow the applicants to reuse their existing driveway and curb cut, the only logical place to put the tree or to put the garage is in the required front yard. This shows the standard ordinance, standard right-of-way width of 60 feet. Here's some photos of the existing property. This is the existing garage and the bald cypress tree. This shows the curb cut on Broadway Avenue looking west. So the site plan shows the existing garage, the proposed garage in the aforementioned 2008 major variance and the proposed garage in the 2020 major variance. To summarize, staff found that the case meets all of the requirements for a major variance. The 82-foot-wide right-of-way along Broadway Avenue creates practical difficulty on the lot. The bald cypress tree on the, on the property also creates practical difficulty. If the tree were not on the property, the applicants could build a proposed garage by right in the rear yard. The proposed variance will not serve as special privilege because the bald cypress tree and the wide right-of-way along Broadway Avenue create special circumstances that necessitate the variance. Approving a variance to request or to reduce the required front yard setback at 102 West Pennsylvania Avenue will not be a special privilege as the garage will be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicants did not deliberately cause the situation. The bald cypress tree in the rear yard of the property has been there for over 50 years, and the applicants did not build the existing garage on the property, which also encroaches into the front yard. This is a preliminary, preliminary drawing of the proposed garage. The garage will be built as close to the existing property or existing garage footprint as possible without harming the bald cypress tree. Granting the variance will allow for preservation of the bald cypress tree, which is significant to the existential character of the neighborhood. The garage will not be located any further or any closer to the neighboring property to the north than the existing garage is now. And the proposed garage will not significantly alter the appearance of the property from Broadway Avenue. The variance represents the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance that will allow for the preservation of the bald cypress tree. The proposed garage will encroach 14.5 feet into the front yard, but it will still be setback off of Broadway Avenue by 26 feet 3 inches. At the August 19, 2020 meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted with six As and zero Nays to forward this case to the Urbana City Council with the recommendation to approve the request with the following condition, that the garage generally conforms to the site plan as shown in Ordinance Attachment A. Urbana City Council has the following options: approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. And staff recommends that the city council approve the request for major variance under the condition that the garage generally conforms to the site plan in Ordinance Attachment A. And I can take any questions you may have now, and the applicant should be on as well.
Any technical questions for Kat? Dennis?
Yes. I was looking at Attachment A, which is the site plan. And I see that the proposed garage is wider facing Broadway now than the original garage that exists there today. Is that correct?
Than the one that exists there today? Yes.
And it, and it moves up slightly to the edge of their property land. But is it true then that does not enter the, the setback? It's on their property line, but it's, it's not into the setback that you were saying was 86 and .6 feet or something, the width of the unusually large setback for Broadway?
The right-of-way, yeah. It does not enter the right-of-way. It is still entirely on private property.
Yeah, so it's only coming forward slightly toward Broadway, but it'll be approaching, it'll be a little closer to Pennsylvania, but still in the backyard of this house. Is that right?
Technically, the front yard because it's a corner lot. But yes.
I see. All right. All right, so that's not such a great change from the position it's in. And my concern was that it would be encroaching into the right-of-way considerably, but I don't, don't see that it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill Brown?
I noticed that there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, but on the other side of Broadway, where there is a sidewalk, they greatly bent it toward the street after it went across at the corner. So it wouldn't, normally, the sidewalk could run along pretty close to the property line. But in this case, since there's such a wide right-of-way there, it looks like if there was to be a sidewalk there at some point, it would be probably halfway between the street and the garage or closer to the street, more like it is on the other side of the street. Is that a safe assumption?
I would say that's a safe assumption. We talked about this with Public Works, and I don't think that there is plan to put in sidewalk at this location or to widen the road. But in any case, it would be in right-of-way, not on private property.
Yeah, and it looks like there's plenty of space there. And I just, I don't know, it's probably not the right time to comment, but I would say that, that, that lot, they've done a really nice job with the landscaping of city property there. Really appreciate the, the beauty of that lot, especially being there on the corner of Blair Park. So people that are coming, walking to and from Blair Park, I've seen on, on several occasions, taking pictures of their, their corner there and everything. So I think, you know, they've really done a nice job with the city property there.
Any other questions for Kat? Is there a motion to get this on the floor?
Sure, of course. I'll move Ordinance Number 2020-09-047, An Ordinance Approving a Major Variance at 102 West Pennsylvania Avenue, Zoning Board of Review Case, ZBA Case, Number 2020-MAJ-03 for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill Brown. Further discussion? Mary Alice? Mary Alice.
I just want to thank the property owners for thinking of ways that they could save their tree that they've so carefully taken care of. So that's my own comment.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last action item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-09-05R, Resolution Regarding the Future of the School Resource Officer Program Intergovernmental Agreement with Urbana School District 116. And this was brought by council members Laut and Miller. So would you like to speak to this?
Sure, I'll bring it forward. This was a resolution in response to a call from the community to acknowledge that the city of Urbana would not essentially get in the legal way of the school districts through the school district vote to end the SRO program. There's not a whole lot more to it than that, I know and understand, that there's probably an amendment that's going to be made to this. And I don't know if anybody wants to ask any questions about what's in the original form. I think really the biggest difference from what I understand from the form that we've proposed and the form that will, the amendment that I'm sure is going to be offered is that we get rid of, under the now, therefore, in Section 1, the letter of A where it says the city deems the agreement to expire at the end of the then current quarter. So I don't know if there's any questions from other council members for this version of it, or if I should just put forward a motion to get it on the floor. And if amendments are going to be made, they can be made, and we can discuss those things.
I'm going to ask if council member Laut had any comment first, and then sure, we'll entertain a motion.
I didn't have anything additional to add.
Any questions?
I will, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't want to have any questions for me before, I guess it all goes into council discussion anyway, so.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that pull my agenda back up, that we pass Resolution Number 2020-09-045R, Resolution Regarding the Future of the School Resource Program Intergovernmental Agreement with Urbana School District 116.
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I have an amendment. So yeah, it would remove the part A of Section 1 and combine it all into one sentence. So Section 1 would read, "In the event that the school district wishes to terminate, suspend, or amend," I added, "or amend," the School Resource Officer Program intergovernmental agreement, then at such time, the city will work with the school district to develop a financial exit strategy that's mutually acceptable to both parties. And then I, so I also added, "or amend" under the second, "whereas agreements may be ended or amended by affirmation of all participating bodies." I think the main purpose was, we wanted to just communicate to the school board that we want to be flexible. If they decide that changes are needed, we're willing to be flexible and work with them on changing the agreement. We aren't going to try to sue them for the full two years' worth if they decide to terminate. If they want to terminate it early, we're willing to work with them. So the only other thing I would add to the amendment that I didn't, when I sent out the version earlier, I said I was going to offer the amendment. I noticed later that the officer is missing. It's actually regarding the future of the School Resource Officer Program. That's how the original agreement was titled. So instead of School Resource Program, in three places, it should say School Resource Officer Program. So I'll move to amend the resolution with those changes.
And I'll second that amendment.
It's moved by Bill, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion on that amendment. Julie? Please unmute.
Oh, I was just going to say Bill Holbrook had his hand up first.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Bill.
I guess just in general, just my comments for both the original resolution and then the amended one. I just think both of these are extremely untimely and unneeded at the moment. We've spoken in the past about how the relationship between the city council, the city of Urbana, and the school district is one of cooperation, not an adversarial one. We know that the school district is actively working on the school resource officer issue. And I just want to reiterate, I think it's our job just to let the Urbana School District do their job, do their due diligence, and for us at the moment to keep out of it. I know that other council members have opinions that we should be giving guidance, but I think this appears to be heavy-handed. I think this appears to be, at least from my perspective, too much government, too much government intervention by us at the moment. And I, you know, in addition, I think tonight we've seen an outpouring of support for the SROs, not only to take the clause A out of the original resolution, but just in general, support for the SROs. And I don't think that we should be voting on either one of these, quite frankly. I think we would have been more wise to defer or table any resolution either today or, you know, what's offered today into something that could be thought out a little bit more and, you know, done at a time where we're not getting in the way of the school district.
Other comments? Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I appreciate your comments on that. I wanted to say that I was responding to a certain degree of communication that I received, not today, as part of this city council public comments, but from other people concerned about the discussions as the school board was moving forward with making decisions that urgently need to be made regarding their budget, which we know we will be coming into these same decisions and having to make some changes to our budget, and that there was concern about the budgetary impact that the possibility of continuing contract would be. And this would be a way for us to signal our sort of solidarity with the school board in terms of supporting them in working collaboratively with them if they were to decide to change, amend, whatever. So I do support the proposed amendment to the resolution that Bill proposed and Mary Alice supported, because I feel like it still fills the intent behind bringing the resolution, from my perspective.
Any other comments? Dennis, and then Jared.
Well, okay, so I've heard from a couple people also who who suggested that the school board is going to be making budgetary decisions at a meeting tomorrow night and that perhaps we should just allow them to due process their own business. We've already had conversation, the mayor has already had a conversation with the school board. And Mayor, can you tell me, was it the school board superintendent or was it the full board that you talked to earlier this week?
City staff and I had a meeting with the superintendent and her staff last Thursday. And we discussed the budgetary challenges that both the city and the district are facing. You know, the city acknowledged the challenges that the district is facing right now. We both, you know, emphasized how we've had a long and productive working relationship and expect that to continue. We started exploring options to, that would help relieve the financial burden of paying for these officers right now while students aren't in schools. And we committed to exploring options and working in a way, you know, working our way through this. So we haven't decided anything yet, but I assured Superintendent Ivory Tatum that the city, as always, is going to be a collaborative partner in this approach, and we'll get things figured out. We're on the same boat here, and the school district and city have had a long, long relationship working together. We have many other intergovernmental agreements, and, you know, some in place right now. So I think we can get this thing worked out. And we're facing, you know, no one anticipated COVID-19 when these agreements were signed. So like everything else, you know, we're looking at uncharted waters, but we'll work our way through it, so.
So one thing one could do right now would be to just wait a little bit before we actually take up this resolution to vote on it. You know, we could bring this back next week to pass it if we wanted to, which perhaps would then be kind of a thoughtful thing to do to allow the the decision to be made by the school board within the school board conversation, meeting during their meeting tomorrow night. I don't know if they're going to resolve it or not tomorrow night, but it is apparently a budget meeting. So they're going to be talking about their intent to either fund or unfund these officers. The mayor, when I talked to you earlier today, you were correcting me on my thought. My impression was that these officers, being part of our police force, would then be reassigned to duties within the police department. Would you comment upon whether that's a correct understanding of what would happen?
Well, if you remember, these were two positions added to our authorized staffing level for the city. So if the most, you know, one extreme, if these officers were removed from the schools, we wouldn't automatically be able to, we would not automatically absorb those two positions back into the city roster of sworn officers, because it would put us two above, so there's.
Because their salaries were being not paid by us, but by.
Right, yeah. These were two positions added to fulfill the terms of the contract.
And these were added at whose request?
The school district.
The school district.
Yeah. Chief Seraphin is on. He might be able to speak to more detail. But basically, it's not just a simple matter about, we'll slide them back into the city's staff for a while, and then they can come back. It's, that's not how it's going to, that's not how it would work.
So I don't know, Brian, you're here now, so I guess you were going to maybe clarify whether the two resource officers would be absorbed back into the city's police department with different duties?
So the mayor was correct. As far as funding, we don't have the funding to support these two extra officers, at least for any sort of long period of time. So no, these were added at the request of the joint effort of the school and the department and the city, if you will, moving forward last fall. So we would have to look at some arrangements, and whether that is, how we would exactly be able to do that, I guess depends on the time, depends on the relations, the negotiations as we try to sort through some of those issues. So it's not quite as simple as just we take them back and pay for their salaries, no.
And does the city or the school cover their, not only their income, but their benefits?
So the, and I see Elizabeth Hanen is still hanging around, so I might ask her to help me with this. So, and I hear this quite a bit, you'll hear that, well, these officers are making this ridiculous sum of money. The officers, when we developed this, we're, I think, costed out at about a 10-year veteran officer, and I think that's in the neighborhood of 74,000 or 75,000. The remaining costs, Elizabeth will speak to momentarily. In addition, that's how we also prorated, then replacement of equipment, whether that's cars, computers for the squad cars, cameras for the squad cars, all of those things, we had then prorated out. So the cost isn't simply half of an SRO for their salary. I don't know if you want to add on to that, Elizabeth?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, their salary, which Bryant is correct, that's a little less than 75,000 each. But a big part of the cost is certainly pension benefits. And, you know, that's not an optional thing. So the cost, with all of that in, is about, you know, 160,000 annually for each officer, which the school district is picking up. Plus, there are some one-time costs that as part of the original negotiation to implement this, we agreed to front, and that was about 50,000 for each officer to, you know, purchase the vehicle and the laptop and the radio that goes in the vehicle and all the equipment that goes with the police officer. We paid that upfront, and the plan was that we would recover that in smaller annual amounts over the life of the agreement.
So we bought the cars and the equipment for these officers? That was out of the service to the school district, right?
Correct.
Is there a reason why they never just hired their own independent security officers?
I think, and that's probably a question the superintendent could answer, excuse me, a little bit better than I could. I believe at this point, it has to do with some of these long, ongoing relationships and sort of the ability for the officers, so much of what they do has to do with not just standing at a door as a security guard might, but being as a part of their sort of school team. And so that's why we have things like different programs and youth assessment centers and things like that that the officers are well aware of. In addition, the officers will also know more about, because of their affiliation with the department, they'll know more about what's happening within the, outside the walls of the school, and then be able to sort of facilitate perhaps a response or making sure that the seventh hour, first-hour algebra class, if student Aids, student B are fighting the night before, they will know that. So I think there was a variety of different factors as to why they chose not to go with a simple security officer.
All right, so my commentary, I guess, on this, it would seem to me that it's kind of a complex question to resolve. It's really the school district has to make this decision. We're going to be merely trying to cooperate with them in whatever direction it's taking. And it seems to me that we would be more informed to make this decision after their meeting this week, because then we would know specifically how to respond to them. And so I would say, I mean, I would propose that we just defer the topic until next week.
Okay, we have a comment from council member Laut.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that if you read the wording of the, go ahead, Jared. His hand was up before me. Nope, he's saying no. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that there's nothing in this agreement, if we, or this resolution, if we pass it tonight, that says that the school board has to do anything. School boards welcome to keep it exactly the way it is. Where the resolution simply says that if they choose, which we know has been a conversation amongst them, to make a change, that we will work with them on it. That's all the resolution says. It is not making a decision, it's not debating. It's simply, it's an if, then. It's not any kind of heavy-handed. It's not, yeah.
And the focus is on the resolution. Jared?
Yeah, I would just reiterate, Dennis, what Julie was saying. Really, this came from questions that were raised at the last school board meeting by school board members who were concerned about the city possibly suing them if they were to discontinue the SRO program. And through that channel of And through that channel of concern, this is something Julie and I felt like we should bring forward as a response to let them know that we're not adversarial to them, we're not, you know, trying to tell them what to do. We're just telling them that we will, we'll support their decision if they choose to do that, and we'll work with them to make that happen. We're talking about the amendment, I just wanted to share a thought that I understand the reasons why folks want to essentially take out the timeframe from it, but I'm also concerned that that just leaves an endless amount of time to resolve the issue if they decide to do it, which makes the, any vote to resolve it basically an empty gesture, in my opinion. Because if there's, unless they, unless they do it in a a resolution of their own, and they put a time limit on it, we don't have a time limit, they don't have a time limit. Nobody's got a time limit, and we basically agreed to let them continue the program indefinitely, because no one has put a time limit on it. And, you know, maybe it is not our position to do that, I guess, is what people are going to argue here, since obviously folks thought about putting that in there, but I'm just putting forward my thoughts to you guys that without it in there, I'm not saying, you know, the current quarter has to be the specific language. Perhaps we could change it to the quarter following, man, I don't know how long it's going to take to figure, figure it out, or if we just use a time of, you know, 12 weeks or something along those lines, or, you know, by year, by year ends. But that's the only argument that I would make. I'm not against the amend add to that. I mean, that's, I'm sure that that I'm not going to win leaving it the way that it is on that, but just my thoughts to you guys on on that, on the timeframe part.
I can't tell you from the conversations with the school district, they're, they're interested in working something out as soon as they can too. So, you know, this is, this is time sensitive. Bill, did I see a hand? Bill Colbrook or no?
I did, I'll let Bill Brown go ahead.
Okay, Bill Brown?
Yeah, just to, the second where as, as the city acknowledges that the intergovernmental agreements may be ended or amended by affirmation of all participating bodies, that's just fact. I mean, we have an intergovernmental agreement. If if they want to change it, they can propose an amendment. If we wanted to change it, we could propose an amendment. It didn't specifically lay out in the agreement how it would be amended, but when it's silent on that, then it's it's handled the same way the original document was. So that amendment, if proposed by either side, would lay out the details as far as, you know, when they wanted the services to end, and would also involve the financial details as far as what the city thinks they have sunk into it and what kind of cost recovery they have to work out. It's not unlike the agreements we have, say, with UBA that have come into question because they couldn't do Sweet Corn Festival. And so we're in talks with them about changing some of those terms and things. You know, intergovernmental agreements have to be a little bit flexible, and I think this just kind of indicates that. I agree that, you know, we heard there was conversation at the school board, and that there was some argument brought forth that maybe one reason they should not talk about it is because they would be sued for two years' worth of salaries. And I think we just wanted to make clear that, you know, if you're going to make a decision on this, make it based on what your needs are for the school resource officers, not, not some threat of lawsuits from the city. We just want to indicate that we're willing to work with the city, or work with the school, school district and school board to accomplish whatever, whatever they decide.
Sharice, your hands up?
Yeah. Bill, did, Colbrook, did you want to go first? Because your hand's been up a couple of times.
But you haven't spoke yet, and so I'll let you go ahead.
I apologize to the people who are in the corners of my screen. I don't always, I don't always
I know, I have, I have the same problem.
Help me, help me look from side to side.
I I guess all I wanted to say was that kind of like what Bill Brown just said, is that with the intergovernmental agreement, I've always, I guess, assumed too, that there was, that that should one of the parties want to amend the agreement, that that wouldn't be a problem. That's what you do with contracts in general. But the other thing is that I also had heard that that some, somebody was saying something on the school board about possibly being sued. And just that being brought up doesn't make it so that that somebody assumes that that's what would happen, that the city would sue them. I don't think we'd get very far if that, if those, if that was the pattern of behavior that that the city of Urbana seemed to have in in intergovernmental agreements. And I don't think that it, I don't think it has that type of reputation. So my assumption would be, of course, if the city of the school district needed to amend the the contract on some level, that we would be more than willing as a, as a entity also to negotiate terms of of suspension or termination. My question, my my one thing is that what happens to the police officers having, you know, let's say that there is an amendment to the agreement that that the the SRO program is suspended, not terminated, but suspended until later, until kids get back into the building or something. Then what happens with that, with the, with the police officers in the meantime, with the equipment in the meantime? Can, I don't know, Bryant or Elizabeth?
I can answer that. I mean, that is what the negotiations would center on. We just don't know yet. There's a lot of different options possible, and that's what the discussions have to focus on. So we don't, I don't know, we can't answer that right now.
Okay.
But but we, but the point is, we need the time to be able to do that. And and this is flex, this resolution is flexible enough that that it would allow that.
Flexible as amended?
As amended, yes. Bill Colbrook?
I just kind of want to go back to my original point and and also speak in regards to what other council members have said is, you know, number one, you know, we understand that we have a fiduciary duty to the citizens of Urbana. You know, going back to the original resolution, it was faulty, it was faulty as written, I don't know who wrote it. But the legal staff weighed in and and commented that paragraph A would have impacted the city financially greatly, rightly. And it needed to come out, and there's enough probably reaction to that, that I think this amended version came along. Well, to me, all that is, is trying to make a bad situation better. And I don't think that it makes it better to the point that we should be passing it. The, I agree with, you know, Dennis Roberts, that that I I just think this is just a tad too soon. We can bring this issue up later, perhaps next week, or whatever is the most appropriate time. I just think that we're trying to jam a square peg in a round hole just, just for reasons that I just really don't understand. And we can sit on the sidelines just for a few more, few more weeks, you know, maybe one week, but to let the school board do their business, and then we can weigh in.
Now, we have an amended motion on the floor. Does anyone want to comment on that? Can the clerk please remind me, we vote on this amended motion first?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been amended, it was originally moved by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Laut. It was amended by Councilmember Bill Brown, seconded by Councilmember Mary Alice, with the addition of the word officer in three spaces and the language that was circulated to council. Are we, is there? Mary Alice?
Yes, I wanted to say, Bill and Dennis, I understand that you want the school board to have an opportunity to to look through their budget and look through what their needs are going to be for this year, given the uncertainty that we have with COVID and in-person teaching. And I agree with you that this is a school board, primarily a school board, district needs to come to their own resolution in terms of how they want to proceed. I think that this resolution amendment that is proposed simply kind of assuages some of those fears that have been voiced from school board members. And this doesn't really say that they have to do something. This is just letting them know officially that we are willing to work with them to meet their needs and and something that works for the city as well. So so for that reason, I mean, seconded in the motion, I agree with it. It's just something that I think that we as a city, as a city council should do, just so that we can communicate that to the school board.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
Bill had a question. Bill Colbrook?
Bill Colbrook?
I just had a, just, I guess, a reaction to Mary Alice, your comment. I mean, I appreciate the fact that multiple people have said that a school board member mentioned something about, you know, whether Urbana will sue the school district. And then, you know, we're all reacting because of that. So now here I sit on on the Urbana City Council, and because of the school resource officer, and now in 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 open forum, if I, Bill Colbrook, say, oh, well, you know, what if we do A, B, or C, will the school district sue us? Do do we think that the school district should then react because of that, just because I, as a council member, said something about suing somebody? That they should be passing resolutions? Now, I just, I just think it's silly, just because somebody on the, on the school board was maybe talking out loud whether whether Urbana would would sue them or not. We've heard, you know, multiple comments from, from the mayor and from other city folks that we're not suing the the school district. And I just think that's a false narrative from the beginning.
Okay, I think it's time to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, you know you're voting on the amendment first, right?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay, I'll say yes, I prefer the amendment.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
That motion passes. Now we're voting on the resolution as amended. Is that correct, Phyllis?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Should we read it? Do you want me to read it, so people know what we're voting on? Okay. This is a resolution regarding the future of the School Resource Officer Program Intergovernmental Agreement with Urbana School District 116. Whereas the City of Urbana, Illinois, City and Urbana School District Number 116, the school district entered into a School Resource Officer Program Intergovernmental Agreement to commence January 1st, 2020. And whereas the city acknowledges that intergovernmental agreements may be ended or amended by affirmation of all participating bodies, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Urbana-Champaign County, Illinois, as follows. Section 1, in the event that the school district wishes to terminate, suspend, or amend the School Resource Officer Program Intergovernmental Agreement, then at such time, the city will work with the school district to develop a financial exit strategy that is mutually accepted to both parties. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll, I'll, I'll go along with this. I'll say, okay, fine.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda, discussion item, city administrator and Chief Seraphin on next steps based on the Hillard Heinz report from last week.
I'll, I'll begin if that's okay. Just wanted to to begin by laying out the process that we intend to use to amend the use-of-force policy. And what we, what we plan to do is to create a webpage that is for the purpose of educating the public and putting them on notice that we intend to rewrite this policy. And among the items that we would have for their consumption would be the policy itself, the Hillard Heinz report, where we got numerous recommendations for updating the policy. We would include a link to the 10 Shared Principles, the Report on the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and anything else that anyone would like to suggest that they think is germane to to informing the rewrite of the policy. Then we would leave several weeks for written input from the public. And what we would like to do is create a devoted email address for that purpose, so that all of that can be funneled, clearly funneled to this effort. And then we could have auto forwards of that email to the council, so the council would in real time be getting all that information that we're receiving. And among the things that we would be soliciting from people are specific language changes to the existing policy that they would want to suggest, any more general suggestions about what they would like us to include or exclude, references to any model ordinances that they're aware of, that they would like to call to our attention, sample ordinances from other jurisdictions, and anything else that is, that they think would be useful. Then we would take another several weeks, I would think it would probably be at least a month before we would be able to digest all of that, because I'm expecting that we'll get quite a bit of feedback. And then we would develop a draft, draft policy, then we would publish that draft policy for additional public input and council review. And then after that second round of feedback and input, we would develop and publish the final use-of-force policy.
Jared?
Can you go over that timeline real quick one more time, Carol?
Sure. And it's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not set in stone by any means, but we would begin, we have to set up a website, and we have to create this email address, which doesn't, is not going to take long. We would create links to a variety of things. So after that is created, we would announce to the public that we are, our intent to rewrite the policy and invite their participation, and we would allow several weeks, I'm thinking two to three weeks, for written suggestions, and we can make a variety, and we'll illustrate what we're looking for, as I, as I just suggested. And then after receiving that input, we would take about another several weeks to rewrite the policy. And as I suggested, given everything that's going on, I think that would take us at least four weeks. So it would be two to three weeks of initial comments and suggestions, time for our internal process that I think would take at least a month. And then we would publish a draft, and then we would have another two to three weeks of of comment, and then we would finalize the policy.
So that sounds like three months?
Yeah, I think, I think three months is is realistic.
Okay.
Julie?
I'd like to urge toward the end of the opportunity for written comment, that we have a couple of opportunities for public listening, because I think that that's a really valuable opportunity for people to hear other people speaking, and that they don't get in terms of public and community development of ideas, when there, people are just writing in on their own. So I would hope, I would be supportive of just having a couple of, not during our council meetings, but during, you know, depending on when we see that timeline, setting something in an afternoon or a weekend, something in the evening, where it would just be a listening opportunity for people to sort of toward the end of that. Or perhaps once the, you know, first draft is finished, something like that, to be sure that we're getting an opportunity for those people who feel best, you know, feel better about being able to comment in public, that that would be something I would advocate for.
Okay. I think we can incorporate that.
Good idea. Jared?
I just piggyback on that and say that I don't know if that would need to necessarily be something like a special council meeting or something, but I imagine city council But I imagine city council would definitely want to attend something like that and hear the inputs from a meeting such as what Julie has said. So perhaps because so many of us would probably want to be participating and that it might make the most sense for it to be a special city council meeting. So I just think about if that's the proper format for it or not.
We can work out the logistics of that, but that's a good point.
I saw hands go up and hands go down. Mary Alice?
I was just going to say that I think if we had a town hall or a listening session, as long as we didn't take action, I don't think it has to be an official city council meeting. It can still be noticed and adhere to the Public Meetings Act. But anyway, it sounds like you guys are going to try and figure something out. And I agree with Jared and Julie. I think it would be a great opportunity for, for us to listen in and also to share with the police department their thoughts on the use of force policy proposals.
Julie and then Jared?
I just, one thing that I know, you know, I noted that the Champagne City is having a number of public sessions, of listening sessions. And I think that it'd be a great opportunity to have a moderator of some kind, you know, and so that we truly were there listening and it wasn't, you know, that sort of, you know, what's, what we've talked about is a sort of setting up an oppositional thing that I think that gesture of having somebody who's a trusted moderator would be a really great way to start working toward that. And I know eventually soon we're going to have a couple of staff members who that's, their job is going to be community engagement and that kind of thing. But until we have those, I think it would be a great thing to, tool to find somebody in the community who's well first in moderating something like that to sort of allow us just to all sit back and listen and have a moderated conversation.
That's great. And if anybody has suggestions on who would be a good person to play that role, I'd love to hear your suggestions offline.
Okay.
Jared?
I can definitely suggest some folks to you, Carol, who would be really great about doing something like that. Question on, I mean, I'm, you know, right now, the use of force policy is redacted. As far as I'm aware, none of the, or at least, Bill, you're, you're, Brown, you're making a face at me like it's, it's not.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't know. Maybe the chief could answer, but I don't think that Policy 300 is, has any redactions.
I don't think it does either, but I'm going to double check before I say that here as I jump online. So keep discussing, but yeah, it should be.
I don't think it does. I printed it out recently and I don't think there's any redactions in it, but I could be wrong.
Well, in any case, the point is, you know, if it was, I'm assuming, Carol, I mean, this has to be, if it's going to be open for public comment, it's, it's got to be completely available.
It's, it's completely available.
The current, the current use of force policy?
Yes, this is, I just, yeah, I just scrolled through all eight pages.
Where would I find it?
If you go into the police department link on the left-hand side under police, scroll down and it is probably about halfway down, Police Department Policies, and they'll all be in PDF format. And use of force is 300.
300, got it. Okay, thanks. It's probably useful for folks as well because I'm sure people can start. Lots of people have watched the Hillard Hines thing and have already started suggesting changes to it. So I'm sure people can already start the process. They don't necessarily need to, to wait on us. We can incorporate input that we've already received prior to setting up the website. The, Carol, one other thing, the discussion item with next steps in Hillard Hines, is this the extent of what you guys were asking? Because I have questions about Hillard Hines.
This is what, this is what we have to propose as a follow-on to, to their report.
Okay. Um, so I had brought something up to them and I'm not really sure what the appropriate method is to follow up. I sent an email to you and Diane and the city regarding the rifle being in the fire position with them. And I believe that they had said that they would look into that and get back to us. Have they done that yet or is that being followed up on? I didn't get a response from anybody from my email.
That's a good question. I, I need to get in touch with them to find out what, what, what they, how they plan to respond to that. So thanks for the reminder. I will do that.
Thank you.
Any other reactions or suggestions for this process? Mary Alice?
So certainly use of force is top of the mind of everybody in terms of the report and the actions that the city needs to take. Are there other items in the report that the city has discussed? What types of plan of action we would be taking? I know that part of it was community engagement and certainly having listening sessions would, would help with that. But I'm wondering if there have been any other conversations amongst the staff in terms of implementation or of the recommendations?
So in the few days that we've had since we last spoke about this and this was presented, as a matter of fact, Mary Alice, I stole this from you. The idea of a, of this sort of clustering of the different recommendations. And I think you sort of went off with policy, tactical, and community engagement. And then I offer, and then I have one more and clustered this into officer development. Because that I think was one of the other, I think that was another piece of this that was missing. And so then we've had some discussions internally with regards to the policy issues, things that were more tactical or operational. We'll have to continue on with that, whether, and whether we decide to put that into a more specific firearms procedure as opposed to a policy. I don't know the answer to that yet. We've also had some discussions with regards to the field investigations because I know that they had some use of force investigations input. And I don't know that anybody here is actually on the council. There might be a couple of you holdovers from several years ago when Master Sergeant Mike Atkinson with the Illinois State Police and I presented to council on what happens when there's a serious use of force, death, great bodily harm, in custody death, and how some of that works. So we're looking at how to kind of incorporate some of those, those, a lot of the recommendations that Hillard Hines made, we use in those and in those investigations. What pieces of those can we pull down into these field investigations done by the supervisors? And then the community engagement's a pretty big piece, as you've already alluded to the fact that we've had some discussion just with how much it would work on use of force policy. But in addition to that, things like the 10 shared principles is exactly on point that we'll be doing here later this week. So I think there's a lot of efforts underway. And even with that officer development, I think there's some, there's things there that, that I, we've read some of the things we do currently and some things we could probably do better at. So the, the initial discussion is, is started, including sort of the bucketing of these different, these four different areas, which I stole from you last week, so.
I guess what I would say is just to kind of, I'm sorry, Jared. Let me just finish my thought real quickly. Just to kind of keep this at the forefront, I think it would be good because there are lots of different areas that are being touched here for council to get an update at least once a month in terms of what process and what has been taken, action-wise, in terms of all these different things that are discussed. It doesn't have to be long, but it would be good to just kind of keep us updated on, on the process.
Understood.
Jared?
And one, one thing that I did want to bring up that I feel like is a, another part of what Hillard Hines was saying and isn't, you know, necessarily explicit, but I think it was implicit in what they were talking about is that, you know, there are a lot of the policies that are listed there that I feel like should be contained within use of force policy that are not currently in use of force policy. So like the use of force review boards, for example, handcuffing and restraints, control devices and techniques, taser, uses of force in custody, firearms range, you know, all vehicle pursuits arguably a use of force for vehicle. I'm just, you understand what I'm saying? All of those things feel like things that are in use of force or should be in a master use of force policy or a blanket use of force policy because they all involve force. Are we considering all of those as well as part of a larger perspective on that? Because I can tell you already that I feel like people in the community are gonna, want to know what our policies are for all of those things as well. You know, because each one of those has to deal with force. So what do we think about that?
I'm sorry, I, I, so I, what I will say is we'll have the use of force policy and then we have other policies that, that were on there, whether they're range. And, and some of the things in the, the range policy are specific to the actual
Range.
Facility itself. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that trying to incorporate them all into yet another master document would be necessarily useful. So my initial thought right now would be to have them in their components, which again are all there for everyone to see for the most part. And then we can have some discussions and if somebody while going through this, we said, hey, I noticed this in policy X, can we discuss that? Sure, but I don't want us to get too far afoot from, let's get the use of force one done first. That's the big one. That's what I'd like to try for us to focus on, I think. And then we can sort of branch out as, as issues come up.
Chief, if there are, maybe not, you know, the entirety of some of the other ones, but if there are specific items contained within one of the others that, you know, we feel like maybe a little more strongly about being included in the master one, would you be opposed to at least those ideas being proposed as, hey, there was this one thing that's in, you know, handcuffing and restraints. I really feel like that's probably something that's more, you know, needs to be set to a community standard so that people are involved in how, you know, the police are going to be doing that. You know, maybe not the entire things, but parts of them if, if they come up.
Let, let me just say one thing, which is at this point in the process, we're not trying to preempt anybody from sharing whatever it is that they want to share about the use of force policy, including what's included in the use of force policy. I mean, we're not saying that we're going to just automatically acquiesce because someone made a suggestion, but we want to hear the suggestions.
Okay, well, and then, you know, this is, we've gone over this, I don't know how many times. I haven't been able to bring it up in a long time. Maybe it hasn't been that long of a time, but it feels like a long time. All of the redacted policies, Chief, we've, we've gone back and forth on this and seen.
Well, I, I don't know if we've gone back and forth. Well, here's what I'll say. There were 26, there's 163 total. There were 26 that had redactions in them. We've viewed those 14, we've since reviewed those when they were initially put up. 14 of those, we've gone through as staff. City legal has, has double-checked that those 14, 14 of those 26 have been moved on to clerical staff to get uploaded. I don't have an update for you tonight on exactly where that clerical process is. There are, I think there are three others that are having some revisions made. And so that gets us to 14 plus 3, 17. That leaves nine, nine left. They're going to require a little extra work on more sensitive topics. And I guess that's the best I can update you right now tonight.
To clarify, those 17 policies are now unredacted. Is that correct?
No, if you tried to pull up those 17 right now on this website that I just told you, you would find the redacted versions there in the clerical process. That's where I know that they're at. So over the last few weeks, we've been working on these things. It just takes some time.
Generally speaking, with regard to redactions for viewing by city council, are we, I still feel like I'd never gotten a clear answer on whether or not we're going to be allowed access to redacted versions so we know what's in them?
I, I cannot give you, I cannot give you a clear answer on that yet, Jared.
What do we need?
So with some of, some of the other things, I, and I don't know, I, I see, I do see Assistant City Attorney Borman on the line here again. I know there's a few areas where we have sensitive information that we are, whether it comes to investigations and things that we don't necessarily want to put out. And so again, there's, there's some more conversation that has to happen. If, hopefully, if we get through all those other nine and if I'm, if we're clear with legal and everyone that, okay, this doesn't matter, then we can. But I have not, you don't feel like you've gotten a clear answer because you haven't gotten a clear answer yet on those remaining, I guess, nine?
I think Kurt Borman, did you want to weigh in on this?
You should be unmuted now, Kurt.
I, I think we just depend on the purpose of the redaction. We'd have to do it on a case-by-case basis to see what, what the reason for the redaction is.
Kurt, this is Councilmember Miller. Does that mean that council members need to come up with a reason on a case-by-case basis to be able to view the redacted policies?
No, I think it just means that we have to see the, the purpose that the police department believes it should be redacted. There's different reasons that it could be redacted. There could be some things that are vital to the, to the security of the building, for example.
Okay. Um, I guess it's, still doesn't answer my question is whether or not we're able to view them?
I think it would be a case-by-case basis. We'd have to look at the, the individual policy and the particular reasons why particular materials might be redacted.
So can I, let me just interject here. One of the things that I believe has not been done in the past when we've redacted these policies is we haven't articulated the specific reason why, even for the benefit of the public to understand. So as we go through this review, any existing, any redactions that remain, we will articulate a reason why. And then after that is done, we can have a specific conversation about a specific policy with a specific reason as to if we, if we feel that it should not be shared with the council, we can have that very particular conversation. We're not prepared to talk about it in generalities right now beyond what Kurt articulated.
Well, I mean, it just, I'm just trying to get an answer. And right now I'm getting an answer, which is generally speaking, council is not allowed to see redacted policies unless the city decides that they're allowed to see them. That's what I'm hearing.
I think that's true.
Okay. I want to know where, where we're standing.
I think that's true. But just like if you asked for a medical record, for instance, we, you know, we're obliged to protect a medical record. So we would make, we would articulate the reasons and, you know, we would have council, you know, council with a SEL at the end there to advise us and we, and we could talk that through. It's, it's really hard to talk that through right now in this very abstract sense of, of unknown redactions, unknown reasons. And so that, that's, I don't know what, that there's anything more to say at the moment.
That's fine. I'm just trying to get a general level of where access to those things are at. And generally speaking, unless we're making an argument that we need to see it and the city can come up with a legal reason why we can't, we're not going to be allowed to see it generally. So I, I get it. I just want to, just trying to get clarification. Thank you.
Bill Brown and then Sharice. Sorry, Sharice, I didn't see you down there.
Must be in the corner.
Jared, I know this isn't, it's still under redaction. We aren't really talking about that under this agenda item. But I, I think some council members probably haven't actually looked at the policies and looked at the ones that were redacted. And I mean, the one that most, most heavily redacted involved use of police informants, I can see a lot of reasons why council members or anybody else shouldn't know how much we pay police informants when we need to. So I think there's, you know, legitimate reasons to redact some things. And the ones I've seen, I can kind of figure out why they were redacted. But there were also some that, you know, I didn't know. So I'm glad you're going through it and you're fixing it up. But I think council members that haven't looked at the policies might get a better understanding of it if they looked at the ones that are redacted. It's pretty clear on the website which ones are and are. And it's clear what's blocked out. So I'd say take a look at that and, you know, you might have a better idea about it.
Okay, Sharice?
I was basically, I'm a dovetail what Bill said. I'm assuming that some, some of the, of the information is redacted based on it's regarding particular response times or, or confidential informants and so on and so forth. And that's not necessarily something that you may want out on a public forum based on. It's like. It's like, you know, giving out the secret sauce recipe from McDonald's. Yeah, it, the different, different police forces have different policies regarding how they, how they react or what, what their policies may be regarding certain criminal actions and so on and so forth. And I don't think that it's, it would be smart to actually unredact those particular things.
Well, I think our, our agenda topic is Hillard Hines' next step, use of force. And if there's anything, Dennis, is this regarding the agenda item? Unmute, please.
I see that. Yeah, it is. Okay, so we've had a lot of conversation about something else, but I want to go back to the Hillard Hines recommendations a little bit. We've talked a lot about wanting to upgrade and evaluate the use of force. And so I would like to also have an equal conversation inserted into this about a conversation about the policy for de-escalation practices in the police department. We haven't talked about that tonight. I think that it's important to establish clear guidelines for officers to follow to attempt de-escalation techniques during points of conflict with the individuals that are involved. And it should be written up to become a balance and and a useful discussion topic in police training with, with, with the enforcement or the, or the, the weight of considered, to be considered as a policy within the police department. That use of force is a vital tool in interacting with the community. We haven't talked about that. And I have talked to, you know, individuals at the Police Training Institute about why it's important to include in their, in their class discussions. And I think it needs to be defined more clearly here as a policy within the police department as well. So I would like to see input on that as well.
Anything else for this policy rewrite? Julie?
Just real quick, just to gauge a little bit of interest, I've been brainstorming with a couple of other people in the community who are, work with youth. Specifically brainstorming ideas of how we could get increased youth engagement in city government. And so I was wondering if there would be support because we had, we're brainstorming, doing some, some cool like Zoom events where kids would be getting an opportunity to engage with the work that the city does. And so I was, it seems like this talking, having a youth event specifically about this issue might be really valuable. So I just, do we feel like that would be something worth me pursuing in conversation moving forward?
Yes.
Awesome, okay.
I agree. We're really interested in different forms of engagement in general, just because of a lot of the work that we're doing. And if you can help us engage with, with youth specifically on this topic, that would be tremendous.
Okay.
And, and I, we, we are very close to being able to announce our community engagement coordinator who one part of their job is going to be working with youth, just as Preston James did before with the self-made king. So that, our, this, our community engagement coordinator would want to work with you very closely on that as well.
Awesome.
And Julie, let me, let me interrupt to, to, you know, one of the things that we saw, it was very interesting when we took the trip to Cheneville, our sister city in France, is that they have a full-fledged youth city council.
Yeah, yeah.
They, and they can, they conduct business, I'm not sure what kind of business specifically they conduct, but obviously it's anything that has to do with youth and, you know, youth involvement in the community. And I think that, that if we established a youth council, because, all right, so it would be like another commission or committee or something like that. So that's a little bit of effort on the staff's part. But I think that it would be a very exciting and vitigating kind of new format for youth participation. Because I think civic, civic knowledge is very important for young people to be aware of. And we know that, that a lot of high schools conduct, you know, many United Nations conferences and that format is very successful. So I think there's precedences for a youth that I think ties in exactly with what you're talking about.
Great. And that's been on the to-do list, so I'm glad you mentioned it. And the U.S. Conference of Mayors has a lot of resources for creating these youth advisory councils or, or what, you know, they have different names for them, but, but a lot of.
Using it as sort of the beginning of our conversations, so I just hadn't talked to you about it yet.
Yeah, so, and, and there are actually a number of people in the community over the last couple of years who've expressed interest in helping with that as well. So I think there's, you know, it's not just a staff, you know, it's not just a staff effort, although that's what the community engagement coordinator can be very involved in, but it's, there's a great deal of community interest as well. And very important. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, if there, I would say, so we have some time to discuss our next item, we'll move on to it. But if you come up with other ideas or suggestions, who should they send them to? Carol, Carol, send them to Carol. As far as what you'd like to see in the approach to rewriting the use of force. And then we'll keep you updated as, as things move along. All right. Thank you very much. Last discussion item, the agenda is City of Urbana membership in the government alliance on race and equity, which is GARE. Julie, you're muted.
Twenty twenty, you're muted. Everybody says you're muted. I just wanted to start off by saying I don't want to, I don't lay any claim to be an expert on this at all. So, you know, I think we're at this point talking in a little bit of generality, although the conversation that I've had with Carol indicates that she has been familiar with GARE and is familiar with some cities who've worked with it before. So I think that's a good start. So thank you so much for letting me add this on the agenda and also Jared for supporting me in that. In fact, it was originally something that was part of the, a circulating document that came from Evanston, the city of Evanston, which is a current member of GARE. And so I think that it's good to know that other cities in the region are involved in it too. So what is GARE? GARE is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. It's a joint project between Race Forward and the Haas Institute for a Fair and Inclusive Society. And together they've been working for over two decades to help governments work toward racial equity and advance opportunity for all. GARE provides best practices, training, models, tools, and sample policies to help governments implement policies and strategies to proactively advance racial equity. And oftentimes what happens is cities work in cohorts with regional, either work in cohorts with other cities in the region or they work on specific topics that are the focus of, of their continued work. Some cities are farther along. They've been working on these kinds of specifics for decades and some are starting at the beginning. So Jared gave me some guidance on thinking about how to present this. So I, I guess the next question that I wanted to talk a little bit about is why we need to or should think about doing something like, engaging with something like GARE. I'd say I'm the person who has this, a story that's very reflective of many people that I've met in the twelve years that I've lived in Urbana, which is I came here for school and I ended up staying for all of the things that make Urbana really special to us. That included a lower cost of living than many of the other cities that I'd lived in and that my partner had lived in around the country and around the world. Public schools that we believe in and have sent now two of our children through a vibrant community life. And of course, the, the great diversity that exists in a university town. But all of the positives that I can point out to about the community that I live in and the reasons that I've stayed here, we have to recognize that racial inequity continues to exist in all areas. In our housing, in income, in education, in graduation rates, in health outcomes, in arrest rates, in all of these things, right? So all of those positives do not take away from the fact that we recognize that racial inequity continues. And through the weeks that I've been attending and listening to public input and the conversations between my fellow council members, I can hear and read, you know, the pain and anger and frustration that's being expressed locally and around the country as we once again grapple with these centuries of inequities that have existed. And I'm really thankful for the people who have continued to make their voices heard about issues of white supremacy and racial inequity. And one thing that GARE will ask us to do is to put right out in front, acknowledging that cities like ours have enacted policies that historically played a role in creating and maintaining racial inequity. And that means then that we all have to now be part of the solution. It's not the only solution, but it's certainly a place for us to start. And I think that now we can agree, just like we're going to be talking about assessment and action on issues of police use of violent, or police use of force, that we need to assess and review actions on these issues throughout our city policies. So how would we use it? Really, it's going to be up to us to decide the best ways to start using the kinds of resources that a framework like GARE produces. The resources and framework that are available through GARE would help us align the city's overall mission and vision by guiding us toward institutional transformation of policies and programs in order to advance racial equity, which means uplifting our entire community. The model helps governments build their internal capacity, utilize tools, engage with those most deeply impacted by past policies, be guided by data and work with other institutions to enact lasting change. I think together we could develop a shared vocabulary to talk specifically about race and racism and how we can work together to promote racial equity. And I think one of, a good example that I like to use is that, this is for the example, we know often that to do new planning developments, there's the requirement to do an environmental impact studies. Well, something like GARE tools would, would require us to utilize racial equity tools, to set goals, assess where we are and figure out how to move forward. So I just would invite you all to have a conversation about the possibility of utilizing something like GARE in our work together.
Jared?
So just to piggyback off of what Julie was talking about and her and I kind of did a little visioning session about, you know, what could the city actually do with a membership in this organization? And, you know, how does that, how does this membership actually end up, you know, doing something to put forward these, these things? And probably the thing that I thought the most and Julie agreed after we had discussed it wasn't, was using the program as an incorporation in the comprehensive plan. Because the concepts that are, that they're talking about in there are, you know, they're not specifically targeting policies necessarily. It's, you know, it's not like something is specific is dealing with the use of force policy or dealing with rifle use or cannabis possession or some of those things. It's very broadly focused on, you know, how do you re-center your community to acknowledge these life, you know, multi-generational, country-long inequities that are so deeply embedded in our systems that, you know, we have to, you know, just as all of us who are doing work to retrain our minds away from things we've been taught that are detrimental, this program does the same kind of thing, but thinking about it from, you know, a com, a comp, a complex perspective and incorporating it into, you know, basically the very lifeblood of what a community does. So I thought that probably the most effective and interesting way I would like to see it incorporated and the way we could see it used is to be put into the comprehensive plan. So that's one of the big, one of the big things that I would encourage other council members, if they have looked at it or if they're going to look at it, or Diane, Carol, you know, you guys, if you're going to check this program out, I think that there's a lot of potential for its use in how we're going to do our comprehensive plan going forward. Because it centers so much of what we're saying about what we value as a city on wanting to focus on racial equity and wanting to focus on overcoming these things that we've, you know, talked about a lot and people want to see us work on. And I think that it will help bring, you know, help us put those values into those things, put, you know, really cornerstone that around that idea. So I would encourage everybody to look at it in that, in that perspective of like, oh, hey, what if we use the principles of trying to reorient yourself to the comprehensive plan? Because that's going to be such a big decision-making document for us going forward. So that was my, my piece I wanted to share with you guys tonight.
I think that's an excellent idea. Mary Alice?
Yeah, I, I've taken a bit of look, spent a couple of hours on GARE's website and looked at their toolkit. And, and one of the things that I like about it is that it recognizes that the city is one piece of the puzzle. There's a lot of other agencies who interact and who have helped perpetuate the inequalities that we've had in our, in our community. And Jared, I like your idea of having it in the comprehensive plan because it really gives us a lens and a focus on directly asking the question, how is this impacting our community? Are we making everything as equitable as possible for everyone in our community? And I think that's the most important thing that I read, or one of the most important things that I read in GARE is, is that if, if some people in our community aren't having access or the ability to have equality in our community, that means the whole community is unequal. And I think that really kind of resonated with me, just in terms of framework, that it's not an us versus them. And I, I don't like the, the setup that we have sometimes in the political discourse of the us versus them. We are one community. And so we need to see, use our tools and use our methods to make it as inclusive as possible for the entire community. So I think that by focusing on this, this allows us to get rid of that us versus them and say, we as a community want to move in this direction. So I, I like the fact that they give us some ideas on other, other cities that have used these tools, that there are other tools, sorry, there are other cities within the state of Illinois who have been working with this longer, who would be able to provide us with some input, advice and things that have worked for them. So I think it's, I think it's a good direction to move.
Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, I kind of dovetail on that. You know, I, I do think it's important to think of this as one community. And of course, you know, we've got a sister city over in Champaign that I think should be, you know, included as well. I don't know if anybody's had any conversation with them, but, you know, every, every month, you know, I go to, to a community coalition meeting and, and, you know, the, the theme is, 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 you know, one community, you know, how can we partner together? Champaign, Urbana, Champaign County, you know, private sector, public sector, nonprofit sector, you know, what can we do collectively to make our community better? It's, it's not all, you know, the, the gun violence, but, but that is, that is a huge part of it. It's, it's education, it's, it's food insecurity, it's, 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 you know, the, you know, home security. The, there, there's a lot of issues that go into it. So I, I think if we're talking about this program and if we want to go forward and that, and I've looked at it as well. I think maybe the, the nearest city to us is Peoria that has, that has instituted this as well and they've been a partner for, for, you know, for many years. I think we should probably invite Champaign to see if they'd be interested as well. So we can have a comprehensive program for the entire community because problems don't start and stop at Wright Street. You know, they, that's an invisible line.
Any other thoughts? Jared?
Just a, you know, next step, Carol, I don't know if, I know you had some experience with this in a previous, from what Julie told me, you had some experience with this in a previous administration you were working with?
I did not work for an administration that had adopted GARE principles, but I, I, I applied for a job in a community that adopted GARE principles. But I had also worked with people in, in Arlington that had come from, one woman had come from Seattle where I believe the GARE model actually originated. And so it's something I'm really familiar with. So I'll let you finish your question, but I, I'm, I'm glad to have the floor for a minute. So I'll let you finish your question, but I, I'm, I'm glad to have the floor for a minute if I get a chance to say something else, but you had a question.
I was just going to say, next step, because that's how I always like to leave a conversation about things like this, is, you know, I would just appreciate if you guys had a chance sometime in the not-too-distant future to take a look at those six strategies, because I guarantee you, you're going to look at them and say, oh, this exactly fits into how you write a comprehensive plan and what we're doing. And just to get a response and a, and a feeling from you guys on it's, you know, how we can use that in the comp plan if you think it's feasible, and we'll continue the conversation in that, in that manner.
So can I, can I just say a couple of things and then you can get feedback from your colleagues on that? First of all, the mayor and I and Will Kolchowski sat in on a webinar that they offer for people who are considering becoming members of GARE so that they can understand all the tools and all the, all the advantages of becoming a member. So we got, we got some insight and, and people were asking questions and so forth. And the easy part is joining, okay? It's writing a check and you join. And it was very clear that you get out of GARE what you put into GARE. And I would say that I, I think it's a great idea to join GARE if for no other reason than for purposes of giving us some tools to use with the comprehensive plan. I know that Andrea and Lilly have already been quite intentional about incorporating racial equity and, 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 and those kinds of themes into everything that we're doing. It's not a separate topic, it's integrated into, into, into the themes that they're developing. And, and so I think we have a, a good head start, our, our heads in the right place, and we could use some tools in that regard. But I think I would encourage you as council members to think about the fact that you are decision-makers and this lens that they speak of is for you to learn how to use yourselves. Because it's not just for you to say to the city, have you run this through the racial equity lens? Have you thought all of this for, about all of this for us? But it's to, it's to empower you and, and give you tools to examine the, you know, the, the credibility of the efforts we've made, the thoroughness of the efforts we made, the, your own thought processes. So I would, I would want you to assign yourself some work as part of GARE to really make the membership worthwhile. And I'll stop there.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I know I have been, you know, having introductory conversations with different staff members in the city. And I think there's a couple of things that would be really useful to think of as we're moving forward too, is that, you know, assessing what's already being done. And I think, you know, the incredible work that's being done by the planning, or sorry, community development group and all of the things that Sheila brought forward today, the efforts that are being made of targeting, you know, monies specifically to those census tracts that are needing increased resources. You know, that there are things that Urbana is already doing that I think fit within these, inside of this criteria. And that that's something that we can say and, and demonstrate as a, as a look, we're not starting from zero, which I think is a really important thing to do. And I also think that as council members, one thing that is really would be useful is I like the idea of data-driven, I think that helps us communicate with one another, communicate our goals and communicate with the community really well to say, you know, we want to, for example, target racial inequities in traffic stops. And we want to, you know, here are the, here are the ways that we're going to go about doing that, and our goal would be X by this time. Or here's our goal of the number of affordable housing units per, I mean, I don't know what the language is for all of these things, you know, and, and, and I just, I like that those would be things that we could, you know, answer to our community with. And, and, and I, and it sounds to me like so many of the staff that I've talked to in Urbana about the work they're doing really would, would be excited to be on board and having this kind of shared language too. So that was, that was really hopeful to me to have those conversations and to learn more about what Urbana is already doing. I feel like is, I know I'm, I'm like a newbie to all of this, but I just wanted to reflect that as well. I think that, that we can utilize the resources right here at the university too, of researchers and such who can help us with gathering all of that data. Either exists already or, you know, they can help us with it.
Carol?
So, you know, the, the one thing that you said at the beginning, which is really, really important, and I don't want to lose it, is, and you repeated it, is this idea of shared language and shared vocabulary and empowering people to ask questions and challenge coded language and, and all of this, and which is a phrase I learned from Lilly, so I got to give her credit for that. But the other thing is, you know why traffic stops have become, you know, like a flashpoint, is because it was something that got measured, right? So your point about data is huge, but what aren't we measuring that, that we could measure and that would inform us and that would then change our behavior? Because then we were seeing, because we started measuring something, then we were seeing an inequity that we didn't even realize existed because we didn't measure it. So, I mean, there's a, you know, this, this is, this is, you know, this can be your, one's life's work and, and it has to be something that we kind of own as, it's not a, it's not a check the box, it's not a one-year project, it's something that, you know, we really do commit to as a, you know, this, this is part of our value system. And, and that, just to circle back to what Jared was saying, that's what's expressed in the comprehensive plan. These are, this is what we value, this is how we, this is how we share resources in a way that is fair to everybody. So I have a very strong personal interest in GARE and what they stand for, so I'm excited at the prospect of joining.
Dennis?
The city has expressed some really strong goals in similar or other kinds of areas that we strive for. And of course, we know that it's an uphill climb to reach them. Part of them is, you know, like one of them that comes immediately to mind is, is reducing our carbon footprint. You know, this is a commitment that we make to try to improve the environmental quality of our lives. So it's very nice because I, it seems like, I haven't really explored it as deeply as some of you have already, but I find it very, very hopeful because it's a way of then setting goals to improve the quality of our life on a sense of equality and justice. And I think that if these tools work well for us, they have just as much importance to us. And, you know, we've got impositions in our community, in our, you know, city government for sustainability. We have, you know, a director for sustainability. And, you know, it might be that we will have a director for equality as well.
And we will. And, and we, this is why this is a perfect time to be doing our comp plan. We're just at a crossroads and the timing, the timing is absolutely right. And that's why when we started talking about the comp plan a couple of years ago, I really wanted to have a comprehensive comp, comp plan, which, which was more than just planning and zoning and land use and single-family and, you know, duplex discussions. But, but what, what kind of city do we want to live in? What's our vision for the future? And so this is a great opportunity and a great framework. Julie?
I just want to make one last statement. Just that is, sorry, is to, to recognize that it isn't, it isn't really about equality. And I think that's an important thing to note in the name of the organization. It's about equity because there hasn't been equality for so long. And so in order to achieve equity, it might mean that things won't look the same for everybody as we try to raise up those communities who have been not given equal.
That's part of the vocabulary.
And so it just, but, you know, those will be difficult things because, you know, power remains in, wants to maintain itself. And so, you know, it is, it will be very hard work. But I think I, I'm hopeful that it would be, make a difference. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have enough direction to move, to move forward, Carol?
If Elizabeth gives us $1,000, then we can join.
To move that resolution, please.
Okay. Will do. Okay, that is, and thank you Jared and Julie for bringing this forward. Last part of this meeting is we will continue with the public input. And there are some people with their, Mary Alice?
I have two things. The first one is, is when I was reading off the names of people who'd sent in emails, I mistakenly added some people who had emailed me specifically and not to city council. So I just didn't want that to be counted against their ability to speak during this part. And then the, the second piece is, is that if we have too many people, then I would be in favor of extending the meeting to get in all the public inputs. I just want to say those two things.
Okay. We have about, according to, we have about 36 minutes left for public input. So we'll get started. Sarah Nixon?
Thank you. My name is Sarah Nixon and I am addressing the city council as a resident of Urbana. With regard, with regard to discussion item number 13, I would like to express my real appreciation for Urbana council member Julie Laut's responsiveness and energetic initiative and addressing issues that include the Urbana Police Department's targeting and re-traumatizing of our community's African-American children, also addressed at length and earlier this evening by Ms. Amina Payne. I recently communicated to the council my concerns and hopes that the appalling practices and statistics exposed by Ms. Payne be thoroughly and transparently addressed. And Ms. Laut responded to me that she agrees that those arrest statistics point to an outrageous example of racial inequity in our community and that she advocates implementation of the Government Alliance on Race inequity models so that all decisions at the city are considered through a lens that promotes racial equity. And I hope that moving forward, we will continue to see Ms. Laut and Mr. Miller and fellow council members truly and meaningfully supported in their GARE-based initiatives and efforts to transform the existing terrible racial inequities in our local systems. I would like, secondly, to offer comment on the proposal to amend city code to allow the curtailing of public input. I agree with the need for civility and public discussion. I question this approach though. Requiring the public to restrict their comments to either agenda action items or other issues while at the same time giving us an either-or time slot to do so imposes unreasonably convoluted barriers to free speech. Surely there is a simpler way to promote a climate of respectful discourse. The mayoral, mayoral statement referred rightly to abusive, personal and hurtful comments being inappropriate and even intimidating. I would like to ask that Urbana city leadership apply the same lens to considering the experience of its constituents. Let's consider Aliyah Lewis, who was aggressively prosecuted after being violently assaulted and insulted by Urbana police. Consider the abusive language she endured from officers screaming and jeering, act like a lady and want to see my gun, and so on. Respect is a two-way issue. Verbal and physical assault from city employees and of course, the toxic and dangerous attitudes, for example, racism and misogyny that underlie it chronically scar and intimidate your constituents, black women, men, and children especially, to the point where they fear going to school, fear dialing 911 in domestic violence situations and fear stepping out their front door when the UPD is nearby. So I ask you to consider not just city employees' rights, but also their obligations toward the community with the same urgency and urge to amend city code. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Axelrod?
Hi, thank you. Could you put up the time clock, please? I have to put in a lot. So I want to talk to you about why for next week's agenda, I really need you to put the utility shut-off moratorium vote then. We've had a lot of close calls in the over two months of the No Ameren Shut-Offs campaign, which again, is a $0 all-volunteer organization now with 31 organizations in membership from Chicago all the way down to Carbondale. We have stopped Ameren, Illinois from utility shut-offs, as Danielle Chenoweth said earlier today, three times now. There were utility shut-off notices sent for September 11th after the moratorium expired, but we confirmed with residents who received those notices, both who made partial payments and no payments at all, that it was extended. We've had a lot of close calls here. Diane Marlin, thank you for speaking to the governor about this issue. Unfortunately, with the exception of his private communications, he's been wholly silent on this. Meanwhile, the Illinois Commerce Commission, which has two Rauner-appointed commissioners and three Pritzker-appointed commissioners, unanimously issued a letter saying that we need utility shut-off moratoriums through March of 2021. But it's not enforceable. They've reached the limit. They have to negotiate with Ameren in order to have utility shut-off moratoria at all. It's always been voluntary with the exception of the governor or the municipality intervening. Those are the only two options. We found out that Ameren, Illinois sent out the utility shut-off notice for September, on September 11th for September 23rd. That is the new deadline. That is still before the census deadline. That is the day after the eviction moratorium expires. The CDC eviction moratorium that exists requires the tenants to do a lot of legwork that they don't know about, which means that we are going to have a massive number of people evicted potentially on September 22nd if there is no action and we know that we can act on both of these two things. And further, those who are lucky enough to stay in their homes will get their power shut off. And again, this is one of those things where people's custody can be put at risk. This is a serious human rights issue. Don't take it just for me. Take it from a 2007 military study that had as one of its priorities the fact that states who have the most power when it comes to utility shut-off moratorium, of them, only seven had extensions of utility shut-off moratoria, which is an essential service as enumerated by them in a 2008 study that cited them as a plan, as an actual plan. This is an absolute failure of our state leadership, unfortunately. And if it continues to be a failure of our state leadership, we need you to act. The Macon County Democrats issued a resolution saying this exact same thing. They called on the governor to reinstate services because municipal and co-op services have been allowed to disconnect. That is where the increase in COVID cases before college came from. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Alan Romero?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to offer a comment when you all, when Bill Colbrook was talking earlier, he had mentioned that, that the, that Jennifer Ivory Tatum had issued a statement in solidarity with your decision to try and continue the contracts with the, the sworn officers in the schools. And I just want to point out that Jennifer Ivory Tatum is not the school board and that this, this is a problematic conflation between the two of them. Because, just because Jennifer Ivory Tatum issued a statement in support does not mean that the, that the community does not have the ability to force the school board not to continue the contracts. So the issue here is that we as community members have been reaching out consistently over the past two or three months to tell you what we want, which is that we do not want the city to continue to give more money to officers who do not protect us. So I think that the issue that I see is that our class interests are not aligned. For some reason, we tell you, you are supposed to. For some reason, we tell you, you are supposed to, um, you all have been elected to represent us. We tell you what we want and you ignore us or you silence us, which is, uh, a really, like, it's a problem that we have to keep showing up here every week to tell you what we want and we keep getting ignored. So, uh, you know, the, all we want is for our, is for our demands to be understood, that the police officers serve an antagonistic system and this system does not help the community. Does not help the community. It doesn't matter if they don't show up to talk here every week. We will continue to talk to you about what we want because our class interests are aligned with theirs. Yours may not be, but, uh, we outnumber you. So, again, I just need to stress that we continue to show up here every week to tell you what we want and we continue to be ignored. I cede the rest of my time.
Diane, do we need to extend the meeting?
Yes, please.
I'll move the weeks in the meeting until 11:00 PM.
One second.
Next up is Bo Barber.
Wanna, do you want to take a vote?
Oh, sorry, yes. All those, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Ms. Laut.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Colebrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay.
Bo David Barber.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I just wanted to reiterate a point brought up by Alan Axelrod is acting on the Ameren shut-offs by next week, because by September 23rd, people are going to lose their power. During a pandemic, that's incredibly dangerous. Additionally, for all the students that are learning remotely, uh, you know, I, I said before, I said this in the last week's city council, you know, that's a devastation to their education. And, you know, it may sound like an exaggeration, but you know, that's, these kids are the future of our country in this community. And so making sure that they have, you know, a proper access to education is important for everyone and is also important for equitable access to people across all demographics in this community as well. Especially for people in the African-American communities that have been hardest hit by this virus. Making sure that they have, uh, equi, access to this remote learning is incredibly important. And I do appreciate, Mary Marlin, that when you spoke to, uh, the governor, you spoke to them, you, you spoke to him in his office about extending, about the, about the shut-offs. And I, and I ask you to, you know, you and everyone else in this council to please push them, push them further. Because the more, the more people that push on them and the more people that tell them that, you know, this can't happen, the more that can be done, the more that he'll listen and the more that he'll actually take action to. So we, I appreciate it that day that you did it. I think, and I kind of just, you know, I think some of the stuff with council comments a bit concerning, but that's just me. Um, I think the only clarification that I had was just wondering, it was on, you know, uh, council, council member Colebrook's statement that it was big government on the, on the Urbana school board. I just, I'm kind of confused by that mainly just because, and I'm just clarifying because it's mainly that, I guess you spoke about it before, the school board already talked about, they weren't asking for, they were asking whether their Urbana city was going to do anything to sue them. So it was, they were worried about Urbana city council acting as a big government to sue them. But then you said, by doing so, would the big government to?
Get in conversation, Diane.
Pardon?
Keep targeting one individual US people.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thank you.
I get the point.
Rest of my time.
Thank you. Um, next up is Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty, um, so dear the entire city council, uh, my name is Megan McDonald. I'm from Ward Five. Uh, while I had more time to prepare this week than last, um, I still find myself at a little bit of a loss of words. Um, I kind of want to really quick piggyback on what Sarah Nixon was talking about and how, um, you know, I also understand the need for civility. I know I come in here pretty hot most weeks and, but that's because I, I really truly care about these women and people in the community and I'm scared for them and they're scared. And they were targeted and brutalized and displaced and charged with extremely high bails because they are black. And I'm just trying to fix that and that's why I keep coming to you. Anyway, I want to say that like, I understand why you're intimidated. This is intimidating to have people like come in every week and tell you what you're doing wrong and how you're not doing enough. And I just want to say, like, you're going harder to censor public comment than like, I've ever seen you all like try to do anything as far as like anti-racist work, like the One Door Program. Like, has that started yet? And, um, like, people were getting doxxed by the News Gazette for years. Like, having their mugshots posted, having their addresses posted by Mary Shank. Um, I, I wonder if you all ever, you know, wrote into them about that. Like, that's intimidating. We were at Aleah Lewis's court date two Tuesdays ago, just because it's proven that when people show up to court watch, sometimes people's sentences are less just because the court feels the pressure and, um, we carry that into these meetings. But also, um, something that I noticed while being out there was that, like, 95% of the people that were walking in there for court hearings were, were black community members. And, um, this isn't like another $10 million question as to, you know, as, you know, Chief Seraphin said about why are, you know, 56% of students that are arrested and taken to the juvie, why are they black? It's not a $10 million question. It's not some abstract answer. It's because, you know, um, the police are inherently racist, white supremacist-based profession because cops harass and arrest more black folks than any other race. Regardless if that police officer is male, female, white, black, Asian, the research shows that across the board, police brutalize black folks again and again. And it starts when they're children, which is like why we're trying to get the SROs out. And like why we keep coming to, to tell you all this hard work that we're putting in, all this research. Like, it's not based in nothing. We're not just like, we're not a minority of people. Like, we're not, like, there's a silent majority or whatever. Like, no, we are real community members, like showing up, asking you to hear us. So please do.
Thank you. Brandy.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank the council members who have advocated and facilitated for public comment, but unfortunately largely I want to express my disgust at the treatment of those who wish to provide input. I want to remind the council that you're here to serve the community. It's the job. And any censoring of public comment goes in direct opposition of that. Moving comment to the end of a meeting specifically, stretching to 11:00 PM is an obstacle for many and discouragement of community voice. There are so many people here who are working night and day to make meaningful change in our community. As a member of that community, I'm grateful and awe-stricken at their commitment and you should be as well. The public is engaged and it's going to remain engaged. You should welcome and encourage that engagement. The outcome, if you continue, your current path of censorship and intolerance will be growth and the hostile relationship between a city's government and its people. It's not good for you. It's not good for members of the community and it's not good for the city of Urbana. I just, I, I want to really express a, a, a hope that the city council will recount, um, its, it, it's, it's approach to the members of the community, which are approaching them with pretty much frank outrage. You know, the people are outraged for a reason. And if you would just listen to that outrage instead of trying to silence them because you feel offended by their outrage, it would go a lot farther. And that's all I have to say.
The last person who hasn't spoken is Ben Deabald.
Uh, hello, sorry, am I coming through?
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, I would like to reiterate or echo, uh, Alan, Alan Max Axelrod's, uh, on, uh, extending the, uh, you, uh, or, excuse me, uh, uh, acting on the utility shut-offs that Ameren seems to, from my understanding, they were supposed to, they gave people's notices to shut off on September 11th, but now it seems like those have been extended to September 23rd. Unfortunately, with, uh, ways things are going, we cannot rely on our, uh, national leaders, our senate for any kind of financial assistance. I would like to, Mayor Diane, for speaking to Pritzker and, uh, on this issue in terms of the eviction moratorium. Uh, unfortunately, Governor Pritzker has been disappointingly unwilling to take action and fight on this eviction moratorium. As we get closer to, you know, to fall in, uh, people are going to be more at risk. And look, you need, you know, people, everyone needs water. Everyone needs, uh, access to electricity, especially during school years. So my hope is that, you know, we can't seem to rely on a lot of our officials, elected officials. So, uh, so I would hope that the city council, if, we, nothing is, seems to be done. We can't, uh, it seems that Ameren is, is being very, very sluggish on taking any kind of action and helping people who are very vulnerable and can't, uh, you know, we can't wait more on this issue. So that's it. Thank you very much for listening. I yield my time.
Thank you. Okay, that completes public input from, everyone has had an opportunity to speak once tonight. And with no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.